Let it fill your soul. Has more than just a year.
Here? Okay, we're back in section 964 under the head by council members coming back. So we're doing this so we can meet our 1:30 as quickly as possible.
Get move on with these two hearings. So let's wow again. Councilman Gooch, you said you had a few questions, sir.
I guess I was.
You've heard your pre-student juror, ma'am.
Yeah, I sworn this morning, yes.
I was asking how long has the, how they own that home, how long has that, that extension? Was that generally put on originally or was that from recently? Or how long has that been erected?
Bueno, lo que estoy preguntando es hace cuanto tiempo usted ha tenido la casa y cuanto tiempo que esta extensión que se estaba con la casa cuando la compraron originalmente o que reciente han puesto ese techo.
Yo compré la casa en el 76 y en el 92. 92. Yo cerré el carport. ¿Y qué más me preguntó?
I purchased the home in 1976 and in 1992, yeah, 1992, I closed in the carport. What else did he ask me?
La extensión.
El techo.
The roof.
Como el cuesta encerrado.
El, el, el techo.
El portal de Maya que usted tiene.
What do you mean?
Espérate.
Hold on.
The extension roof that you have, those pillars that you have was screened in?
Como es la extensión del techo que usted tiene, las columnas donde está encerrado con Maya.
Yes.
About three, three, three years, three, four, three, four years.
Around four, three, three, three years, three, four, three, four years.
Okay, my last question, listening to the other residents and their complaints, is this a, a single-family dwelling or is this a rental property? Because they made mention of renters on the property.
Bueno, y la última pregunta que tengo fue usted escuchando las quejas de los otros vecinos. Usted es una casa de una sola familia, usted alquila la propiedad, ¿hay inquilinos en la propiedad?
No.
No.
No meaning what?
No quiere decir qué.
Ah, no, eh, eh, yo tengo este muchacho que es un estudiante, que él está ahí viviendo provisionalmente, pero no está rentando.
No, no, I have a, this guy, a kid, he's a student, he's there living temporarily, but he's not renting.
So how many people are in the house? Is it a family residence house and, and, and is it an extension to where someone's living there or is this just a family resident house?
Como es una residencia esa casa, es una extensión de donde vive alguien, como es una casa residencial.
Es una casa residencial.
It's a resi- yeah, it's a residential home, single, single.
And, and just for the purposes of the record, councilman, with regard to what's before you today, I ask that you look specifically to the carport and certainly you're able to judge the credibility and weigh the credibility of witnesses. That's one of the rules that, one of the roles that you do play. But also to remind you that ultimately you have to come back to the consideration of the specific request and the hardship criteria.
Thank you, I have my answers, thank you.
Sí, tengo la respuesta, sí. ¿Algo más?
Thank you very much.
Gracias.
Gracias, señora. Thank you very much to the applicant, nothing else?
Pues la solicitante, no hay nada más.
I would like to add something, the, if I can, the, I want to make it clear that the, the sun hits the house from the front of the house, not the, you know, it's not. The sun comes up all morning long on the front of the house, not the back. And, uh, all of these complaints are not true and it all comes about because I cut some of her, uh, they on the side, I cut some of her, her, her flowers or I don't know, eran, yo no sé decirle como, tú sabes, porque no eran flores, eran, ya, by.
Uh, it was, I don't know how to say it, you know, and they weren't flowers, but they were like plants there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
Gracias.
Okay, may I have a motion to close? A motion to close by councilman Nascako, second by councilman Gooch, all in favor? Any opposed? What is the pleasure of council?
Well, Mr. Chairman, the, the issue in question here is this carport on the side and that's what we're looking at here. And I think hardship has been, has been clearly described with the testimony or the, the comments from the gentleman originally. He went down section 27-80, you know, as I mentioned, we, we see a lot of this throughout the city of Tampa, this is not a unique situation. Now again, we're looking at that carport there, so I make a motion to overturn the VRB's decision therefore, hereby approve the side yard variance from seven feet to one feet, to one foot to retain an existing covered on-screen patio because petitioner has demonstrated that the petitioner has met the hardship criteria in section 27-80.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
I'll yield for purposes of the vote and second it and then I guess yield back. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
May.
Okay.
What was the first one?
Getting better and security gaps and a vote. Gooch, Miranda, no?
Okay, and councilman Carlson. Okay, do we, and my microphone is kind of off, but do we have a additional motion?
Actually, council, if at a cross-eyed additional meeting, only four members.
And we're here with councilman Citro. Okay, and councilman, we just did a motion, councilman Nascako did a motion to overturn the findings of the VRB and it failed with myself and councilman Nascako supporting the motion and the remainder of the council members opposing it. And now I again pose the question, what is the pleasure of council?
If I can, Ms. Wells, if you can, I appreciate your counsel for purposes of the record on this. What would be the appropriate steps to take at this point being as how councilman Citro just re-entered the room and was not present for the discussion? A motion was made.
How about we redo the motion? We, we vote with councilman Citro taking part?
My only concern is he was absent for the testimony.
May I, may I ask, council, how much testimony was given in the last 14 minutes? Was it any different than when I was here earlier?
He missed nine minutes.
Nine minutes.
Councilman Gooch had questions of the applicant with regard to the nature of the use of the home and how long the carport, how long they owned the home and how long the carport had been installed in its current condition. You know, if that was generally it, if you want to hear that testimony again, if you feel that is relevant to the criteria in section 27-80, I guess in an abundance of caution, we could go through that effort, but that was generally the nature of the testimony that was elicited from the applicant.
Based on the competent substantial evidence that was given earlier, I feel that I can make.
Okay. Well then, let me say this just for the purposes of council's rules. If you, when council fails, a motion fails to receive four votes, the motion fails and if another motion in order is not made, the public hearing shall be automatically reopened and continued to a time certain in the next regular scheduled council meeting. But because councilman Citro came in, it would be appropriate for.
Well, yes, let's, let's do that so we can move forward. So is there another motion that a council member would like to make?
And it could be the same motion repeated if that's the case.
Okay, yes, sir.
So therefore, I make a motion to overturn the VRB's decision and hereby approve the side yard variance from seven feet to one foot to retain an existing covered or screened patio because the petitioner has demonstrated that the petition meets the hardship criteria in section 27-80. And we heard that from the gentleman earlier who went down. He shot hardship criteria and pled his case.
I, I again yield to second that and then yield back. All in favor of councilman Nascako's motion? Aye. Any opposed?
May.
Okay, fails.
Okay.
Gooch, Citro, Miranda and Carlson.
Voting no.
Voting no. And how many voted yes?
Two.
Two, so the motion.
Did not carry. Is there, is there a substitute motion?
Yes.
Or an additional motion someone would like to make?
Chairman, I move to approve of the VRB's decision to deny the applicant for side yard variance from seven feet to one foot to retain the existing covered or screened patio because the petitioner has demonstrated that the petition meets the hardship criteria in section 27-80. And we heard that from the gentleman earlier who went down. He shot hardship criteria and pled his case.
I, I again yield to second that and then yield back. All in favor of councilman Nascako's motion? Aye. Any opposed?
May.
Okay, fails.
Okay.
Gooch, Citro, Miranda and Carlson.
Okay.
Gooch, Citro, Miranda and Carlson.
Voting no.
Voting no. And how many voted yes?
Two.
Two, so the motion.
Did not carry. Is there, is there a substitute motion?
Yes.
Or an additional motion someone would like to make?
Chairman, I move to approve of the VRB's decision to deny the applicant for side yard variance from seven feet to one foot to retain the existing covered or screened patio because the petitioner has failed to demonstrate that petition meets the hardship criteria set forth in section 27-80. Second.
We have a motion by councilman Miranda seconded first, I believe, by councilman Citro immediately afterwards by councilman Gooch. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
But she would care if the Dinkin' River be asked to vote. Nascako would be here.
Okay, next we move to our next item, which we go back a step to 63. Now, Ms. Wells, we, is, is anyone here for our 1:30? Okay, because I advised the planning commission we'd be about 10 minutes or so late. I know our interpreter needs to leave here inmediatamente, so will, Ms. Wells, what is your counsel in that regard, ma'am?
I would like to proceed with item 63.
Okay, let's do it. And council members again, make all robust inquiries, but only those that are necessary. As always, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Kate Wells for the city attorney's office. I had previously provided the hearing procedures for these review hearings. The same procedures apply in this matter that applied in the previous one. The standard of review is de novo, meaning that this council sits in the same shoes or seats as the variance review board and you decide whether or not the applicant, based on the record of today's hearing, has met its burden of proof with regard to the hardship criteria in section 27-80. And with that, I will turn it over to Roberta Meade Curry for a quick review of the VRB hearing and I also have sample motions for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman Roberta Meade Curry, planning, design, development, coordination, that have been sworn in. Again, the code section under review was 27-156 and also 27-290. The applicant was seeking to reduce the rear yard setback from 20 feet to three feet. You have a site plan for your reference. So again, this is the front yard. This is the corner yard, rear yard, side yard. The rear yard was going to be reduced, or requested to be reduced because of this space here from 20 feet to three feet. The side yard was being requested to be reduced from seven feet to zero feet. The applicant did change his request at the hearing to be seven feet to 18 inches, 1.5 feet. The additional request was to reduce the separation of the accessory structure from five feet eve to eve to zero. However, that's been subsequently removed and they agreed to do that during the hearing. So your review was only for the first items discussed. I do have additional photos if you want to see them, otherwise I can ask any questions you may have.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate it. Any questions? Yes, sir. Councilman Citro.
If I may, Ms. Curry, thank you very much. The building looks kind of cockeyed on the property. Was this total building? Let me rephrase the question. Was all permitting done on this building at the time it was constructed?
The addition, as far as we understand, is a code violation and was not, didn't have permits.
So it was built, I'm just relaying what you just said. It was built without permits?
Correct.
My last question, I'll make this quick, Mr. Chair. As I was trying to allude to in a prior, if inspection went on right now, would this addition be certified as, 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 of course, being safe and, and meeting all requirements?
I cannot speak to the structural integrity of the structure.
Thank you, Ms. Curry.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions? Okay, applicant?
Good afternoon, thank you, councilors, for the opportunity. My name is Maite Alvarez and I'm here with one of the owners in representation and to translate for him. I'm gonna go ahead since I'm very aware of the whole thing and do our presentation. This is her, can you, I'm doing a backwards act.
And do you have the DVD of the VRB hearing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, I do. This is a bigger picture of the site plan. This is what's existing.
I'm sorry. Forgive me, this is my oversight. I neglected to ask for the copies of the DVDs to be put into the record.
I'm sorry, it's here.
Thank you, I'll take them and put them into the record. Thank you, Madam clerk, my apologies again.
I'm standing in the hall.
Thank you.
This is a site plan, with this actually, this area here is where he has built, part of the property that has been without a permit. And what we asking is basically a variance to reduce the setback from this area here and the side of the property. We have, we actually removed one of the structures that was in the property that, um, that we agreed to remove is right here. I don't know if I am doing it the right way. Okay, that's where the structure was, it's already been removed, everything has been cleaned up and everything. And this is the part of how it looks like right now, we have, if we were asking actually for three feet, turn it backwards, I'm sorry. We were asking for three feet, but actually we have a little more. We have actually four feet from the structure to the fence. I don't know if I can pass it on, the pictures you might be able to see with four feet. This is how the, the side of the property, it's all been cleaned up. I'm sorry.
There you go.
Yeah, so that's the side, pretty much like a sidewall around the property. And it's about four feet from the fence. And also to kind of answer your question, the previous question you asked about the, we already, hi, I mean, we have an engineer, we call an engineer, we went through the property and he's, he already, it's not confirmed, of course, has to go to the permitting process, but he confirmed that the structure has been well built and he should not have any problem going through a permitting. I know it will be like an aster five permit, but if we can grant this variance, you'll be able to go through permitting, to the permitting process with no problem.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything else?
No, if you have any questions.
Okay, any questions from council, councilman Citro?
May I please, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
In this photo, it appears as if there is two eaves, it appears as if there is two buildings. Are both of those said buildings the, the addition that was done without permitting?
No. This area, do you see in the site plan? This is the area.
So it's all done, it was all the same building, it was done without permitting?
Right.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, ma'am. Is anyone here from the public here to comment to item 63? If so, please come forward. And ma'am, I'm sorry, did you want to speak?
I'm sorry, I forget. I have letters from all the neighbors, a lot of the neighbors, they are actually in favor, all the close neighbors in the area. I don't know if I can turn them to you.
If you don't mind, ma'am, so we can see that. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Anything else, ma'am?
That'd be okay.
Before we close, okay? May I have a motion to close? A motion to close by councilman Nascako, seconded by councilman Gooch, all in favor? Any opposed? What is the pleasure of council?
There is no pleasure in doing these things.
No, there is not.
There's hundreds of millions of dollars that this whole city, the county, the school board have been neglected to collect because when you build them, R1, single-family dwelling lot, and you continue to expand, there's no tax collection on none of it. When you do that and you don't pay federal income tax, you don't pay anything, and I'm not talking about these here now, I'm talking about all of them. It, it puts the jeopardy of the cost on those who are paying the taxes. So that's another dilemma that we have, not only for these people here, but for the thousands of them, and I'm gonna say thousands, that have done it with or without knowledge, that have created someone else paying somebody's fair share. That's another question that has never been answered. When you continue to do that and, and there's areas of this city that have many, many more than others, some have very little to none and some have thousands of them. And this is a problem. And this administration, from what I see, is moving forward to correct these things by changing some areas of who's in charge of what and how they're gonna do things in the future. So I cannot, I cannot vote to give this individual the right to do what he or she is doing because there's just a lot more to it than just what I've, from what I've heard, from what I see. That's just my take.
If you'd like, councilman, you may.
This, I think it's the sheet. I move to approve the VRB's decision to deny the application for a side yard variance from seven feet to one, three feet, right? To retain an existing, that's the wrong, sorry. Anyway, I, I would move to.
You wanted to deny, this is the one.
Okay, thank you. I moved, I moved to approve the VRB's decision to deny the application for a side yard variance from seven feet to one feet to retain existing covered or screened patio because petitioner has failed to demonstrate the petition meets the hardship. Is that the right one or not?
Which one is?
That's the same one that I.
This is item 63, VRB 19-106.
Okay. I'm sorry, what was that?
I would like to move to approve the VRB's decision to deny because I haven't seen any evidence that, that we should overturn the ruling.
And I apologize for getting in a few minutes behind. If I could ask? Well, I just needed some clarification. I heard the word patio or porch.
I was reading the wrong one?
Yeah, just for a second.
I was reading the wrong one.
We never got the second one that I know of.
Okay.
We got only for the first.
So take the last motion I made because I read the wrong one.
Yeah, well, putting the motion aside, I need to find out a little bit more about the structure that was built. So move to reopen, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine. Motion has a new public check, we have some grand all in favor? Any opposed?
Go for it. Right. Just staff on this, I don't know whose staff is in this. Thank you, Robert. So what, what are we talking about? What, what was the ultimate structure that was built?
Roberta Meade Curry, planning, design, development, coordination, that have been sworn in. Basically, the existing structure is a house here and the additions were somewhere within this vicinity and back here. The shed was, as they demonstrated, was removed and they agreed to do that in the hearing.
So, so when we talk about the, the quote addition, are we talking about air-conditioned space under, under roof?
A portion of the structure was, is a carport and the other portions are air-conditioned space, yes, sir.
Okay, and where are they in terms of, obviously they got cited or something, but where are they in terms of, was the construction done or been done or what?
It is existing at this time, yes.
I mean, we're not showing any signs that it's continuing, it's, it's pretty, looks like it's pretty much done?
Construction is complete.
Okay, so just under the code, not you personally, but under the code, if council.
This is what's existing.
I'm sorry. Forgive me. This is my oversight. I neglected to ask for the copies of the DVDs to be put into the record.
I'm sorry. It's here.
Thank you. I'll take them and put them into the record. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and my apologies again.
I'm standing in the hall.
Thank you.
This is a site plan. Well, this is actually... This area here is where he has built part of the property that has been without a permit. And what we're asking is basically a variance to reduce the setback from this area here and the side of the property. We have... We actually removed one of the structures that was in the property that that we agreed to remove. It's right here. I don't know if I am doing it the right way. Okay. That's where the structure was. It's already been removed. Everything has been cleaned up and everything. And this is the part of how it looks like. Right now, we have... If we were asking actually for three feet... Turn it back. I'm sorry. We were asking for three feet, but actually, we have a little more. We have actually four feet from the structure to the fence. I don't know. If I can pass it on the pictures, you might be able to see the four feet. This is how the the side of the property is all being cleaned up.
I take them.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
Yeah. So that's the side, pretty much like a sidewall around the property. And it's about four feet from the fence. And also to kind of answer your question, the previous question you asked about the... We already had... I mean, we have an engineer. We called an engineer. We went through the property, and he's... He already is not confirmed, of course, has to go through the permitting process. But he confirmed that the structure has been well-built, and he should not have any problem going through a permitting. I know it will be like an aster five permit, but if we can grant this variance, should be able to go through permitting, through the permitting process with no problem.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything else?
No. If you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions from council... Councilman Sittro?
May I please? Thank you, Mr. Chair. In this photo, it appears as if there is two eaves. It appears as if there is two buildings. Are both of those said buildings the addition that was done without permitting?
No. This area... Do you see in the site plan? This is the area.
So it's all done... It was all the same building was done without permitting?
All right.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is anyone here from the public here to comment on item 63? If so, please come forward. And ma'am, I'm sorry. Did you want to speak?
I'm sorry. I forgot.
Of course.
I have letters from all the neighbors. A lot of the neighbors, they are actually in favor. All the close neighbors in the area. I don't know if I can turn them to you.
If you don't mind, ma'am, so we can see that. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Anything else, ma'am?
That'd be okay.
Before we close. Okay? May I have a motion to close? Motion to close by Councilman Nascakos II and by Councilman Gudes, all in favor? Any opposed? What is the pleasure of council?
There is no pleasure in doing these things.
No, there is not.
There's hundreds of millions of dollars that this whole city, the county, the school board have been neglected to collect because when you've built an R1, a single-family dwelling lot, and you continue to expand, there's no tax collection on none of it. When you do that, and you don't pay federal income tax, you don't pay anything. And I'm not talking about these here now. I'm talking about all of them. It puts the jeopardy of the cost on those who are paying the taxes. So that's another dilemma that we have, not only for these people here, but for the thousands of them, and I'm gonna say thousands, that have done it with or without knowledge, that have created someone else paying somebody's fair share. That's another question that has never been answered. When you continue to do that, and there's areas of this city that have many, many more than others. Some have very little to none, and some have thousands of them. And this is a problem. And this administration, from what I see, is moving forward to correct these things by changing some areas of who's in charge of what and how they're gonna do things in the future. So I cannot... I cannot vote to give this individual the right to do what he or she is doing because there's just a lot more to it than just what I've... From what I've heard, from what I see. That's just my take.
If you'd like, Councilman, you may.
Just... I think it's this sheet. I move to approve the VRB's decision to deny the application for a side yard variance from seven feet to one... Three feet, right? To retain an existing... That's the wrong... Sorry. Anyway, I would move to...
You wanted to deny this is the one.
Okay, thank you. I move to... I move to approve the VRB's decision to deny the application for a side yard variance from seven feet to one feet to retain existing covered or screened patio because petitioner has failed to demonstrate the petition meets the hardship. Is that the right one or not?
Which one is?
That's the same one that I...
This is item 63, VRB 19-106.
I'm sorry. What was that?
I would like to move to approve the VRB's decision to deny because I haven't seen any evidence that we should overturn the ruling.
And I apologize for getting in a few minutes behind. If I could ask... Well, I just needed some clarification. I heard the word patio or porch.
Oh, I was reading the wrong one?
Yeah, just for a second.
I was reading the wrong one.
We never got the second one that I know of.
Okay.
We got only for the first.
So take the last motion I made because I read the wrong one.
Yeah. Well, putting the motion aside, I need to find out a little bit more about the structure that was built.
Okay.
So move to reopen. Sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Motion has a new public check. We have some grand all in favor. Any opposed?
Go for it. Right. Just staff on this. I don't know whose staff is in this. Thank you, Bert. So what are we talking about? What was the ultimate structure that was built?
Robert Amin Curry, Planning, Design, Development, Coordination. I have been sworn. Basically, the existing structure is a house here, and the additions were somewhere within this vicinity and back here. The shed was, as they demonstrated, was removed, and they agreed to do that in the hearing.
So when we talk about the addition, are we talking about air-conditioned space under roof?
A portion of the structure was... is a carport, and the other portions are air-conditioned space. Yes, sir.
Okay. And where are they in terms of... Obviously, they got cited or something, but where are they in terms of... Was the construction done or been done or what?
It is existing at this time, yes.
I mean, we're not showing any signs that it's continuing. It's...
Correct. It's complete.
Looks like it's pretty much done?
Construction is complete.
Okay. So just under the code, not you personally, but under the code, if council affirms the VRB recommendation or the VRB decision, and they probably... They might have recourse going to court or something like that. But putting that aside, if we affirm that, they would have to remove their addition and go back to their original structure, tearing down everything they did?
Technically, they would have to come into compliance with the setback. So if not all of it, they would have to tear down a portion of it, come into compliance, and present drawings to permit, to get a permit.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the reopening mess.
Yes, sir.
And I guess legal would probably tell us that we shouldn't take into consideration... I was reading the hardship, the hardship that he proposed, translated. Now, I can't find it. Oh, there it is. "I constructed these rooms because my family, it's too big for my house is too small. It's me, my wife, three kids, and my ex-wife." I guess that's a factor. We can't necessarily consider the extended family. But in all seriousness, we can close, and then I'll just give my opinion.
I would ask, before you close the hearing, that you allow rebuttal since you took additional testimony from staff. Thank you.
Do you wish... Do you... To the applicant, do you wish to say anything further after the last question was held?
Yes.
Then go forward if you wish, ma'am.
I will. In his behalf, I would like to say that we understand where he was saying about the tax issue, the collecting. However, he didn't know what was the permitting process. It costs a lot of money at the time to get permitting, engineering. He was not aware of any of that. However, he was willing to do the right thing now, and his property has been appraised, and he's paying taxes for the existing structure, even without being permitted. We're really asking you, is the setback, would really represent a hardship for any of the neighbors? They all okay with that? We're willing to proceed with the permitting process, and if we have to pay a fine or whatever the case is to correct what he did, we're willing to do that. But it would cost him a lot of money to turn down the whole thing and rebuild everything, and we're really asking for, you know, to consider the situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate it. Okay, may I have a motion to close? A motion to close by Councilman Nascakos II and by Councilman Sittro, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we had a motion by... Was it Councilman Carlson seconded?
Could we get that motion again, just for purposes of clarity and for record?
I move that we approve the VRB's decision to deny the application because no evidence has been shown to justify overturning it.
Okay. And who seconded that? I apologize. Councilman... Okay, Sittro. And sir, you wish to speak?
Yeah. These are never easy, and just like Councilman Sittro, I served on the variance board for many years. They're, you know, they're not easy. The... I think that it's notable that on the one... The one... One of the variances that they were looking for was on the accessory structure, which is now moot because they removed the accessory structure. So, you know, they're trying to come into compliance and that sort of thing. I, you know... So anyway, that's my two cents.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have a motion on floor, all in favor. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, next, we move onward forward to item 76. And thank everyone... Yes, sir. With a planning commission for your patience over the last 20 minutes, we appreciate it. Thank you very much. Go for it.
Good afternoon. Melissa Zornita, Executive Director of the Hillsborough County City County Planning Commission. Thank you for having me back this afternoon to present some information about our population and employment projections for future growth. This information is something that we update every five years to understand existing trends and what that might mean for the future for population and job growth. We, in this case, took a look also at a real estate market analysis to understand a bit more about where some of those trends are showing in our community. We looked at several scenarios of how that growth might play out, and we got a lot of public input through a survey called It's Time Hillsborough that was done last summer to about what direction the community wanted to see growth focused. And then put that all together into an allocation that's used by different agencies and departments as they're making different policy and planning decisions. These projections are not something that's adopted, but they are something that the state does require us to utilize in our planning. They ask... This is just a section of the statute that refers to that we have to plan for at least a 10-year time horizon, and we're supposed to use the projections issued by the Bureau of Economic and Business Research out of the University of Florida. And these projections, as I said, are used to understand the ramifications of some of the decisions that might face you, as well as your counterparts at the County Commission and the City of Plant City and Temple Terrace, as you're making decisions about infrastructure. They're utilized in the long-range transportation planning process that the NPO does, the school facilities planning process, other master plans for things like fire rescue services. And we also use them sort of as a check to see if the trends and decisions that are being made are taking us... Are continuing to be in line with the city's comprehensive plan, or is there a need to make some changes there? So the projections for 2045 are that our community, Hillsborough County as a whole, will be over 2 million people. We've been steadily moving in that direction over the last 10 years. As a county as a whole, we've added 23,000 people on average per year, and then the City of Tampa has added on average about 6,000 people per year. But you can see that in... Just in the last year, between 2018 and 2019, that was close to 12,000 people. So the growth is steady. It's been increasing in the recent years as we've come out of the recession, and we're all feeling the impacts of that, and that's a lot of what I'm sure you're hearing from your constituents. We looked, as I said, at a number of trends of how we've been doing. One of them was to look at how we have been developing in terms of our densities. The blue column in each of these is the average that your comprehensive plan allows in terms of density for residential development, and the tan in each case is, on average, across the jurisdiction, what that... What is built. So the Tampa comprehensive plan, on average, allows 19 units per acre, and the City of Tampa, on average, is built at about five dwelling units per acre. You can see that each of the jurisdictions is well below what is allowed, on average, for their comprehensive plan. And similarly, the same thing as it comes to floor area ratio, which is our measure of intensity of non-residential development. Again, those are... Have traditionally, the development has been well below what the comprehensive plan permits. We took a look at residential growth and where that's been occurring, and in particular, where multifamily development has been occurring. And you can see a number of hotspots, particularly within the City of Tampa, around downtown, some of the areas in West Shore, up around the university area. We also looked just generally where the residential building permits are focused. And again, from 2011 to 2017, you can see a couple... Three areas of focus there, downtown, West Shore, and sort of the western edge of Brandon along I-75. Terms of non-residential development, again, downtown and West Shore continue to be hot areas, but also the area sort of east of the airport. Terms of employment growth, this shows the density of employees or jobs per gross acre. And so the darker the color, the more jobs there are prevalent in those areas. And you can see that continues to be centered around the major business districts, including the university. Some of the areas north of the airport start to pop up, as well as going out the State Road 60 corridor to Brandon. So sort of what we explored in our scenarios was what would happen if we kept building the way that we have, because as the trends have shown, we've been building below the density that's been permitted. If we kept doing that countywide, we would be looking at needing to expand into some of our rural areas in the future. It would continue to focus on transportation investments that are more highway-focused because of that spreading out of the growth as opposed to focusing it around some of the areas where we might be able to support greater additional modes of transit. This sort of shows in that timeline between now and 2045, when we might... If we continued to build the way we have been building countywide, we would build out the cities and the... In the unincorporated area, they have an urban service area, which is the area where they're trying to focus growth. That would build out around 2035. Now, I don't have a crystal ball. This is nothing that's set in stone, but this is a way to inform some of our decision-making because if that is not the future that we want for our community, then we need to begin to make decisions differently now. So... And that is what we heard from the community. What we heard from the community through our surveys, through our public outreach, was that people didn't want to preserve a rural component of Hillsborough County. They would like to focus growth along some of the commercial corridors where there's the opportunity to focus around transit-oriented development and have greater infill and redevelopment in some of those areas. And that scenario would support some additional multimodal options, such as potentially some sort of fixed guideway transit, further express bus or bus rapid transit as well. And so this lines up with the transportation improvements that are being planned in the NPO's long-range transportation plan. This also lines up with the City of Tampa's existing comprehensive plan, which focuses growth particularly in and around the three business districts, West Shore, downtown, and the university area. Some of those major commercial corridors connecting those are also a major focus, both in the city's future land use map, as well as articulated in the city's vision map. In terms of some numbers, this shows sort of the different share of the population of each of the cities, as well as the unincorporated county. So the City of Tampa would grow by 61% between now and 2045, or another 212,000 people. And in terms of employment growth, it would grow by about 200... Just over 200,000 employees. Looking at that today, the City of Tampa makes up about 21% of the... Well, this is actually 2015's population, and in 2045, the City of Tampa would make up 22% of the overall county population. In terms of employment, in 2015, the City of Tampa was about 22% of the employment countywide, and in 2045, it would be 33% of the employment. A lot of the employment is focused in those three business districts. In terms of transit-oriented development, there were some assumptions made in the modeling that generated these numbers, that there would be transit-oriented development along some fixed guideway transit, along the corridors from the airport to downtown, downtown to the university. That would contemplate both the types of transit that Hertz is looking at in terms of VRT, or some more fixed rail along something like the CSX lines. We also looked at some additional bus rapid transit out to the Brandon area. And allowing for that types of transit-oriented development would allow us to accommodate one out of four new residents and one out of three new jobs in those areas. So it really is an opportunity to focus the growth in those areas. We also looked at the opportunities for redevelopment. This map is hard to read, but the areas that are yellow, orange, or red start to pop out as areas where the building to the land value ratio is such that it might be advantageous for the landowner to tear down the building and build something else on the property because the land is that valuable. So that just is an indicator that there might be potential for redevelopment, and you can see a lot of that is along our existing commercial corridors. We have a little further drill down into the numbers. We looked at it into subareas within the city and the unincorporated county to get a better feel for where some of these... This growth is going. So this shows in turquoise, the existing or 2015 population, and then the 2045 population. And a couple that stand out here in the city, you can see downtown has a lot of future growth. South Tampa has a good chunk. North Tampa, New Tampa, a number of those pop out across that. And then in terms of employment, it stands out even more, downtown being a major focal point for future employment growth, West Shore continuing to build on the synergy that's there, the university area of Brandon also are high there. That's the information that I had to present and share. There's, as I understand it, going to be a workshop discussing this with the County Commission on March 25th, so we wanted you all to be up to speed on what the plans are, and I'd be welcome to... Any questions?
Thank you again for your presentation and for your patience. We really appreciate it. Any questions from council members or comments? Yeah, Councilman Dinkoff.
I was gonna defer to anybody else.
Anybody?
I... No questions, actually. Just a statement for saying thank you for bringing this information to us, and I know there are several people behind you that helped with that. What... Mr. Chair, I'll be very quickly. What it appears to me is freedom of choice, and some people like to live within the city, some people like to live out in suburbia. And I get that. I think we all get that. However, there's cause and effect. Transportation is our number-one issue, and I mentioned that earlier today during the FDOT. If you want to live out in suburbia, that's fine, but you're more than likely going to come into city limits of Tampa to work. Transportation has to be our number-one focus, and the mayor has said that repeatedly over and over again. It's our Achilles' heel. So if FDOT is listening, please, that's... Let's wipe everything off the table we have now and start working on transportation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Dinkoff.
Thank you. Thank you, Melissa. And thanks to the planning commission and your team for all this hard work. So the doc... Is that a document that you're gonna provide to us, or is that... Is that just... How does that work?
We handed out copies of the presentation last week, so I apologize. You might have been out of the room and not have gotten one. We will make sure you get one.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure.
I have two extra copies here.
Well, how handy. Thank you. But we can make sure that gets recirculated to anybody who didn't hold on to it.
Okay. So a couple of questions. One, when you say that the city will likely take this share of the population and the county will likely take this share, is that... What kind of presumptions is that based upon? Is it based upon just current trends? And I've got some follow-on questions to that.
Sure. Most of it is based on what is adopted in your comprehensive plan. So those land use categories that are already on the future land use map was the basis for most of it. The primary assumption that we made that differs from that is the transit-oriented development. Your comprehensive plan outlines a density bonus if there's a transit station along a fixed guideway transit line. So we made some assumptions in those red areas that I showed on the map, that the density might bump up in those areas beyond what was in the future land use map. But most of it is based on... But most of it is based on what's adopted in your plan today.
Okay. The transit-oriented development, TOD, I don't know what you call them, zones or...
Station areas, yeah.
Station areas. It's my understanding that's a work in progress right now?
It is, well...
By whom?
Well, the, there are decisions that need to be made about where the fixed transit lines are going to go, and those decisions would be made by HART. We are working in conjunction with the city and HART on a grant from the Florida, the Federal Transit Administration to do some stationary planning around the alignments that are getting chosen for the streetcar extension and the HART BRT going up Florida, Nebraska, and out Fowler. And to begin to apply much of what's been in your comprehensive plan for close to ten years now, we've never had the opportunity to start to plan for transit-oriented development because we haven't had the T part of the TOD. So, now we have the opportunity to start to talk in real terms about that.
You and I spoke about this a day or two ago. You know, one of the concerns I have is oftentimes developers will bring us projects, us being the city council, for rezoning, and, and they are sort of leading the way, okay? They're saying, "Well, you know, we think that, you know, it's great, let's put three-hundred units down here in a certain part of town, I won't go into any detail." You know, and yet those particular projects might be way off course in terms of the TOD and the, you know, and, you know, where any real likelihood of future development might be. But then the city, you know, because the comprehensive plan might allow that, in many cases, the city approves it, and then those get built. We have many of those along west shore, which is still a two-lane road, and to my understanding, talking to Gene Duncan, there's no plans to expand it beyond two lanes, even though we've approved thousands or the various councils along the years, and the city has approved thousands of units along west shore. That's just an example. So, instead of being proactive as a city, we've always, in my lifetime, been reactive. And I think that it's great that we're having this type of conversation. I think it's great that we're gonna have this conversation with the county in regard to, let's all be more proactive and, and basically tell the development community, we're not telling them we don't want growth, we know that growth is coming. Growth is coming in massive, you know, tens of thousands of numbers over the next X number of years. So, we're not telling them we don't want them to come, we're not telling them that we don't want them to build to accommodate them, but let's be more proactive in terms of identifying where those best places are. And I think that's what you were alluding to, Melissa, is that where are those places? Well, I would assert that between here and the airport, okay? To me, that's the future downtown. Twenty years from now, and I think I've said this before, twenty years from now, when somebody flies into the airport and they say, "Hey, where's downtown?" I think downtown is gonna be this one massive corridor between where we sit right here and the airport. And it's, and whether or not it's along Cypress or Kennedy, or the interstate, or everything in between, you know, and I think that's what's gonna happen. That's what happened in Atlanta. Atlanta was started as a downtown, and then you, it moved north, and Buckhead, and, you know, just creeped up, and pretty soon, they've sort of got this elongated downtown to the best of my recollection. And with that, they also got transit to go with it, you know? So, and you brought up a good point, is the university area has great potential, there's a lot of land out there, there's a lot of employment out there, there's not a lot of residential density to speak of, not nearly what there could be, you know? But once again, let's do a better job, and Carol, I'm so glad you're here joining us today, let's all do a better job of being proactive, you know? And Florida's never been good at that. Florida's always been reactive and responsive, and that's why we have so much sprawl. And I think that's what some of the county commissioners, at least three or four, have been extremely concerned about. But, and my last point is, is I think we can help the county. I think we can help the county reduce their sprawl, because, and I know some people are not gonna like what I have to say, because they already think Tampa's too crowded. But I think we can take some of that density and some of that, some of those people who are coming, moving down here and say, "You know what? We've got great opportunities to come down here and live in these high-rises, live in these mid-rises, and be a block or two from the train station, or the bus station, or the BRT, or what have you, in these, in these, you know, great urban areas. And you don't have to have that single-family house, you know, out there in sprawl land." And I think, Joe, as you said, I think some people will say, "Hey, that is my choice, but I like that choice," you know? And it's sort of a win-win, because we can, we can develop and encourage and boost our transit system, and at the same time, still have some open space out on the edges of the county, because otherwise, we're gonna lose it, and we're gonna look just like Pinellas County, because Pinellas County, as we all know, is built out wall-to-wall. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else? Yes, sir, go ahead, sir.
Well, good points by Mr. Citro and Mr. Dinkoff, but the problem you have is, we don't communicate well. See, the problem you have is, if you have Team A, B, C, and D, and they never meet collectively, you never get a plan. It's always B's plan, or A's plan, never the whole team's plan, or the whole conference plan. And I always use analogies when I coach, when I ran ball conferences from Alabama, Georgia, Tennessee, Florida, you know, twice a year, I would have what I call an annual meeting, so I could hear from everybody in the whole region together collectively, making the plan, versus I'm just going to Georgia, and Georgia wants to do this, but it's, it really is affecting Florida. And that's the problem we have in this county, we don't communicate, where everything is separated, everyone has this territorial thing. Same thing I told FDOT this morning. We serve Hillsborough County, and this, all the citizens, all the residents. Everybody goes here, I go out to the county to do things, people come in town, we have to have meetings that everyone is at the table, county commission, terrace, plant city, and us, making the plan. And that's the message I wanna send to people, we have to start being together as one voice, one sound, that will help every cornerstone of Hillsborough County. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, please, I just need a shout-out to border county commissioners, thank you very much for your vote on raising some fees for schools, but now we have to think about where those schools are gonna go in the city of Tampa. There are a lot of schools that are built out.
Yep.
There's probably gonna be needing a new high school sometime soon. I know Chera Monte was the last school built in South Tampa. So, let's really start thinking about where those schools are gonna be going to. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
One other follow-up to Mr. Goode's very, very excellent comment about communicating between jurisdictions, because this meeting that Commissioner Miller, I think, has organized and invited us to is almost without precedent, in terms of, you know, the city actually meeting with the county and talking about long-range planning. I think it's great, and I think, I hope it's the first of many. But the other thing, and I was wondering this the other day, Melissa, in terms of state statute, is now that we are so interconnected between the city and the county, and frankly, even though they might not like it, Temple Terrace and Plant City, is it possible to ultimately combine all of those plans into one just multi-jurisdictional comprehensive plan? Because again, you know, would state statute allow it? Is it, is it, there's a precedent for it? And I'm putting you on the spot, because we haven't talked about it, but again, that might be the ultimate communicator, because if we had, you know, and I'm sure developers would actually like it, because then they just have one book to go to in terms of what is the long-range plan and desire of this entire community. You know, we all know that if you ask, you know, ten people out on the street where the city, the city line is, you know, nine of them aren't gonna know. And frankly, Brad Baird serves water to, you know, an extra third of the county, so, anyway.
Yeah, I believe that today's state statute requires that each jurisdiction, Andrew can help me if I'm wrong, each jurisdiction adopt their own comprehensive plan. Certainly, pieces of them could be more in common today. You all have virtually identical public school facilities elements of the comprehensive plan, so that's something that, as, given that the planning commission serves all four local governments, we do look for those opportunities to have greater consistency amongst the plan. We recently did a study of Fowler Avenue with the recommendation that we begin to, in that quarter, have the same land use category on the north and the south side of the corridor, since it has bridged the county and the city. Those are examples of the types of things that we could do more of, certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much for that, I appreciate it. I know that, you know, in my district, certainly, you mentioned university area, obviously very relevant, New Tampa, you know, and now about nineteen eighty-nine, nineteen ninety-three, three-six-four-seven, had about seven or eight thousand people. Today, it's about fifty-five, sixty thousand people are out there. That's a, that's a great example of just population explosion. You take a look at county line road, a lot of which is dealt with by Pasco County, but the folks out there, it's a, you know, constant crisis for people out there. So, this is a very relevant conversation for all of our communities, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we move, and council members, by the way, I need to leave here, I didn't know we'd, at about two-thirty-five, I have a home appraisal I have to be there for and open the door for somebody, so, I, but we should be able to get through most of it. But I see here we have next, item seventy, I believe is next, item seventy.
Good afternoon, City Council, Brad Baird, Deputy Administrator. Item seventy is about the Cypress Street Outfall Regional Stormwater Improvements, but in particular, the impact to businesses on Cass Street. So, I'd like to start with just showing a project map on the overhead, if I could. Up there. So, the project consists of large box culverts and appurtenances, and a large waterline extension, and a lot of relocation utilities, starting from North Boulevard on Cass Street all the way to Rome, then south on Rome to Kennedy Boulevard, and then on Gray Street all the way over to just past Tampanium. So, I just wanted to, you know, give you an idea of the scale of this project and how large it is in the West Tampa area. So, the overall benefits of the project to reduce flooding, obviously, in the residential and commercial areas of, and if, I'm not going to use the overhead again, so, if you could, the consisting of those streets that I just went through and the surrounding areas, the neighborhoods there, will also enhance pedestrian safety, improve mobility, or make mobility improvements, upgrade signalization in the transportation area, and finally, reduce pollutant loading on the Hillsborough River and the Hillsborough Bay, we have some green infrastructure as part of that, as part of that project. It's a design-build contract awarded to Woodruff &amp; Sons for thirty-five point six million dollars. Valerian Group is the sub-consultant that's brought on to perform public relations. Real quickly, just three points on the timeline. The notice to proceed was given July twenty-fourth of last year, 2019. And then, the, what I'm here to talk about today, the Cass Street closure from Willow to Rome will last through about July one, and that includes two weeks of contingency for, you know, inclement weather and unforeseen conditions. And then, finally, the estimated completion date is November 2021. So, this is a rather large undertaking. So, let me get into the Cypress Street Outfall Public Engagement items. First, we started out in 2018 with mail-out to property owners, residents, businesses. We provided a notice of an open public meeting on the project website, held an open house on December fourth, 2018, which included design boards for all three of those project segments you saw earlier on the, on the map. And it was, we had a lot of good participation in that. I personally went, went to that open house. They, the participants were invited to submit comment cards on, you know, their input and what they would like to see as part of the project. We followed that with a West Tampa CRA meeting, where we did a presentation, Q and A with the West Tampa CRA Advisory Committee. And then, we had door hanger notifications, this is all before construction, of what the planned construction activities were, the city suggested detour route, and of course, all the contact information, including a twenty-four-hour hotline, website, link to a mobile app that we created, and then project email. And then, most importantly, we had one-on-one outreach, where we went door-to-door, and again, this is before, before construction, outreach to all the property and business owners along the project corridor. And then, we had press releases, and, I didn't finish in three minutes today, press releases and traffic advisories. And then, you know, public engagement during the construction phase has been fairly extensive, provided specific signs for the impacted businesses, where we listed the businesses' names on those signs, we placed them at key points along the detour routes to notify drivers that the businesses are open and accessible. We work closely with the businesses to maintain access for scheduled deliveries and for their patrons. We continue those one-on-one meetings. As a matter of fact, I was out there yesterday on the job site, and Valerian had two representatives going door-to-door, you know, talking to the businesses, you know, can we, what can we do better, what can we do here? So, with all those impacted businesses, and in particular, on Cass Street, we have five that are mid-block, that don't have access on a north-south street. So, those, those five are the most impacted, and that includes one restaurant on the north side, and then a sixth restaurant on the south side called Novo Junction, and, but they do have access with a north-south street. And then, we continue press releases and traffic advisories, of course, and alerts are posted on the project's website on a regular basis. So, with that, 'cause I know you have specific questions on the impact here, I'll answer questions.
And Councilman Citro?
Sure. Fred, you're a messenger, and I understand that. There was a certain criteria for businesses for being in operation for five years. Can you just explain that criteria that we're going, that may be able to receive compensation? Was there any compensation to any of these businesses that were greatly affected that had not been in business those five years?
They, to date, we have only had one claim through our risk management division, and that claim has been denied. That business was not in business for five years, in fact, it had, it just recently opened when we started the project.
Was it recently opened, or...
Yes, just recently opened.
Sold to a new business owner?
But, no, it was just recently opened, and it has just recently changed business owners as well. That was the Cass Street belly.
Was there any use of alleyways that could have been done to help these businesses out, to get clients to and from, and, you know, Councilman Dinkoff was always talking about the use of alleys. Was there, was there any ways of maybe putting little detour signs in there? One way detours, you can use this alley to get to this business, or these businesses could get their supplies?
So, that is an extremely good question, because that's exactly what we were out there yesterday to determine. There is an alley that does not go through at either end on the north side of Cass Street behind those five businesses, but it does have north-south access to that alley. It hasn't been used in a long time, so... So what we are doing is looking into putting rock down on that alley that used to be used, by the way, for those, those five businesses. And it looks like there's no reason we can't use that alley for access to the back, which will provide huge amount of relief to those five businesses. We are also talking to, one of the businesses isn't open. In fact, just received their permit to remodel a building to, to turn it into a pizza place. And they have an open lot that they're going to use in the future for their parking lot. So we're talking to that owner about possibly using that lot for those five businesses. If we can do that, it will make a world of difference for these five businesses. Because like I said earlier, this, this could be closed all the way through July one.
And that's, that's a tough hit on businesses that are in that area.
Yes.
Seeing as how there was only one who did not fit the criteria, is there any special circumstances in which the City of Tampa could help that, that building?
Not that I'm aware of. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I'm just, I just asked the question. Is there certain circumstances?
For that one business?
For that one business, yes.
Yeah, not that I'm aware of.
All right.
That's a better question for risk management.
And, and certain signage for these alleyways will go in saying the business is this way?
Absolutely. We'll add that to the alley. And also, today, we're putting out additional variable message boards to provide additional direction to the, for the businesses.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Goots?
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Well, the problem I have is that if you're just now going out there to assess the situation, then shame on us. And the reason I say that, because we are getting a bunch of calls in reference to this. So if we're getting a bunch of calls, and there's some firm who's supposed to be advocating to, for the businesses that, that have a contract, and I'm getting calls from these businesses saying, what's going on? What's the timeframe? What's going on with the work? Then someone's dropping the ball somewhere.
No, Councilman, we have been out there since twenty eighteen. We're, we're out there every day. And we've been going door-to-door since twenty eighteen. We have a, a, a great presence out there. This situation of the five businesses that I keep referring to has just now, we're just now getting to that point in the project. Until then, we have been east of Willow Street, so I want to make that clear.
All right. Well, you know, I just want to make sure, because I don't want the residents, you know, being a business owner, especially a small business owner, is tough at times. And if you, you don't, you, you're trying to make it, and now you've got something that's going on that's impacting the business, it, it, it's, it's very hard. And I, I know my family owns a business, so I know at times if it gets slow or some things happen. So I can imagine those business owners that are on Cass. But you said the one group was denied. And we need to talk about risk management. But I think, you know, I always look at, we're reactive. Still being proactive, like Mr. Dingfelder said earlier about other situations. If we have businesses or we're doing a project, we should know what that impact may be caused to those businesses, or especially those small businesses, and have a plan in place and not just say, well, we're going to deny people. A lot of times, we just deny people just to deny, but what is the other plan to deny? I, I just don't understand. If you've got a business there who's losing money because we're doing a necessary project, there's gotta be something built into the project that can compensate some of these small business owners to stay alive. Other than that, they're going to just shut down because they can't maintain. So that's something that we maybe look at further down the road, making sure, because we're going to have a lot of projects going on board all throughout the city. And it may impact a mom-and-pop place. And, you know, and, and those mom-and-pop places, they go week to week sometimes. And if they ain't making that revenue to pay those people and their workforce, it's very, very detrimental to them and those families. So we need to look in that. I, I ask that you and your staff make sure that we're looking in that with construction services and everyone in the future, so it's not impacting the little guy, because that's who's going to be hurt, the little guy.
Yeah, we will do that. I do want to point out that we have been extremely proactive on this project in that regard. And these businesses have access to this day to the front.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Dingfelder?
Two questions. And I'm not asking to play lawyer, Brad, but to the best of your recollection, is there an appeal process for, you know, for a business, I don't want to call them by name, but for a business that's been denied? And if so, does that come to us, kind of like, you know, these zonings and stuff? Anybody know?
I, I don't believe there is. That's, I'm going to defer to Andrew on that.
It seems like every, seems like every government decision has to have some, some right of appeal to go somewhere.
Andrea Zellman, Legal Department, I don't honestly know that answer, but we can certainly look into that for you.
Yeah, just, just, you know, send us a memo or something on that and let us know. And, and clearly, if, if, if there's a right of appeal, that obviously the, that business needs to know also. If it's timely. I don't know that either. My other question, Brad, is you mentioned that one leg that's going to go under Howard and Armenia?
Let me put the map back on. So it, it will, yes, it will cross both Howard and Armenia, but this is not a jack-and-bore, you know, where we're crossing. It's an open cut. Because these are double eight-foot by eight-foot boxes you could practically live in if it's not raining.
You read my mind, but I was hoping they were jack-and-bore, but I understand those are huge. Too big to jack-and-bore, or at least economically. So if you're open cutting, what, what do you do? A lane at a time, I guess? And so you don't disrupt track, traffic abnormally? Because it scares the heck out of me that, you know, if you close more than one lane at a time on Howard or Armenia, you're going to back up the whole world.
Yeah. These boxes are so large that we will have to shut down that intersection. We're going to try to minimize the length of time that we shut that down. Yes.
For how, how long?
I will have to get back to City Council on how long that will be.
He said eight feet?
Eight feet by eight feet, and there's two of them. Not to mention, there's a thirty-six inch water line as well next to it.
Massive stormwater pipes. But wow, that, that kind of.
Big.
Well, not just big, but also that traffic impact. I mean, obviously, you're going to reroute them around the neighborhood, but you got all that military traffic that runs up and down there, through there, and everything else. That's.
It, they're so big that you can't, you know, and, and the sections are, are, I believe, twenty feet each. So, you know, you're not, just to set them down, you can't do one lane at a time to cross. It's just physically impossible.
So there's no way to get, there's no way to get smaller sections and do little five-foot increments?
Not unless you don't want to take care of some of the flooding. You need them that size to.
No, 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 I meant five-foot sections.
You know, I will look into whether Woodruff has special fabricated sections for going across Armenia and Howard, and I will, I will get back to you in a memo.
That would be good. All right, thank you.
Okay, and Councilman Citro?
Just one more. How many, risk management to these businesses? How many businesses have approached risk management for some sort of compensation?
The one.
That's all? Just one?
Correct.
How many did risk management go to, asking if they need the compensation?
No, they came to us, and we showed them the application process, which they did. They did submit to risk management, and it was denied. And typically, the ones I've been, just FYI, the ones I've been involved in in the past, you have to show, you know, what your standard business revenue is, and then show, you know, what your drop-off is directly related to, to the construction as, as your damages. And that was not demonstrated.
Mr. Chair, last, it's a statement, but all small businesses have the, all, it's proven that all small businesses, if you don't succeed the first two or three years, you're not going to succeed. And why the, the criteria says five years being in business? Apparently, the, this criteria, in my opinion, needs to be looked into, because if a new business has started out, and also the city comes in and says, oh, sorry, we're going to tear up your front driveway. You're not going to be able to have people coming in. They've already lost. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. And, and before I recognize Councilman Goots, I apologize, council members. I need to run to actually, I'm the one has to pick up my son, then I have a appraisal I have to go to today on my house. And I apologize for this. I want to, just really quickly, this is very unorthodox, just make three motions if I may. Just quickly, I motion for, and I'll give you this, a presentation by Robert Blount of Ave Brown Ministries regarding the work of the organization and what Tampa can do to further help, and this occur on April second.
We have a motion from Chairman.
Second.
Does it make questions, sir, under ceremonial items?
Yes.
And is it a presentation?
Yes.
And how long is it, sir?
Ten minutes, everything. Yep.
Thank you.
We have a motion from Chairman Vero with a second from Councilmember Goots, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you, then I motion to give a commendation a hundred grand elementary for their creation of a sensory-friendly workroom for children with autism.
Second.
We have a motion from Chairman Vero with a second from Councilmember Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, I motion to give a commendation to New Ta- New Tampa Players for the Penguin Project, and this occur over the weekend.
We have a motion from Chairman Vero with a second from Councilmember Carlson, all in favor?
Aye.
And I apologize for interrupting. Excuse me.
If I could just say on the record, if that, New Tampa Players, I met them yesterday, the before, but the program they have going on this weekend, everybody should try to attend.
Yes, I'll be there, of course.
Really? Great. That's great. Yeah, I, I, I'll, I'll be there with my family, and I encourage everyone to go. It's a really great thing. So, great, great. And anybody, oh, and I, I apologize. One last thing. This evening, I was told yesterday at the American Legion, we'll be doing the commendation there for Bill Hammond. They invited me to occur, I think, tonight at seven, Ask Brandon. But if anybody else wants to go, please come. I'd love to have more folks there, because he was a great guy.
The Legion five, those five?
Yes, yes, ask. I apologize. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Councilmember Goots?
Again, it goes back to Mr. Citro's point when you talk about the small business and risk management. And this group that's supposed to be out there advocating that it's being paid on a contract to notify businesses and so forth. If that's the case, my thing is, why are these businesses not told about the impact risk management that they can apply for? Number two, most of your small mom-and-pop restaurants don't have the attorneys or don't have the skills at times to fill out all this stuff. And it scares them, because now you're asking about all this financial that they may not know how to do or understand. This impact, construction, how do I know what that costs? I don't, I'm just a guy who's just trying to make it, sell sandwiches or sell whatever. So I, I think, you know, we have to educate the people, but we have to be the ones to also be able to help the people when there is an impact.
Yeah.
So I think we need to look at that. If we're talking about we're impacting people to do what we need to do to help them still, as far as our roles or whatever. But we have to be able to also, if there's something in those contracts saying that we're, this is firm that's supposed to be advocating for those businesses, they need to advocate the right way and have all the information, so those people can know and say, this is what you need, and if you need help, we can help you. So I'm hoping going forward that we're talking about this, we kind of put some new policies in place to make sure we help these people. I think that's needed, from what I'm hearing, from what I'm seeing. Thank you.
And we do, we do provide the, the small, a- and all businesses with what the process is, you know, to apply for assistance or file a claim, I should say.
I, I'm sure you probably do.
And it, and it's probably those bigger businesses that have the, the certain people there that know what to do and how to do it. But I, I always have to look out for the little guy, who, who don't really know to know, but want to know. So I think, I just want to make sure that we're looking out for those, the, the little guy. The big guy, they pretty much have the attorneys and have people that know, hey, get with the city, we've got an impact here, whatever, whatever. But the little guy really doesn't know at times.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? No? Thank you very much, Mr. Barrett.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number seventy-one.
All right. Item seventy-one, Brad Barrett, Deputy Administrator. This is about the six-year report, I'm six years, I follow yours, a six-month report associated with pipes. We, we do not have any participation to report on. Obviously, we, we do not have anything in, in the pipes program under construction yet, and may not at the second six months' report, and certainly will on the third. But I, I do want to take the opportunity to mention that we have three major Consultants Competitive Negotiations Act Design Teams Selected. One for each, the, one for the wastewater treatment plant, one for the water plant, and the comprehensive infrastructure for Tampa's neighborhoods is also been selected and by the mayor. And those three alone total up to seven hundred and fifty-four million dollars. So we're already, you know, rolling into putting together agreements, initial agreements with those three teams to get going on surveying, design, and maybe some early outwork as well. So that's where we are. We're going to continue to put out additional RFQs for things like pumping station rehabilitations at Sulfur Springs, Bay Shore Boulevard, citywide pumping station rehabilitations for twenty-four pump, pumping stations, and several others that are not pipe-related as well. So we're al- already closing in on a billion dollars worth of work that, you know, we're, we're moving ahead with. And I also want to take the opportunity to remind you that in the pipes presentation six months ago, we talked about some CCNA scoring changes with regard to the MBDEO or MBD office, and also a new grading category for workforce development. We increased the scoring criteria for, I guess, now it's equal business opportunity, if I, if I got that right, Mr. Hart, with increase the scoring from ten to twenty points. And I can tell you, the committee has already seen that's made a huge difference in, you know, the, the shortlisted teams that, that we're seeing. And then the new grading category of workforce development was added and in line with the mayor's initiative on workforce development, and that is worth ten points. And so, as quickly, things we're doing to maximize WMBE and SLBE involvement, the selection process will emphasize business relationships with the firms with, certified by the city. Design subconsultants will be emphasized in the, in the pre-submitting conference and in the CCNA presentations. But we're asking a lot more questions about, you know, what's your participation on the design phase, not just the construction phase. And then we'll maximize that subcontracting with the city. As I said before, with the certified firms as part of the guaranteed maximum price negotiations. And that's, you know, that's really important. We can, we can just, you know, continue those negotiations until we're satisfied that what you said in the presentation, what you submitted as part of your package, you're either meeting that or exceeding that. We will have joint letters of intent executed by both the prime contractor and subcontractors, survey audits conducted by Mr. Hart's office. And then Mr. Hart's office will also track everything using a diversity management compliance system. And before I get into a little more specifics on the workforce development, I'd like to talk about an example of where this is making a difference. Just yesterday, on the David L. Tippin Water Treatment Facility High Service Pump, Pumping Station Project, we had an equal business opportunity workshop, and sixty to seventy vendors attended that event yesterday. Sixty to seventy vendors. Huge success. It was very successful. And then finally, the maximizing workforce development, you've heard this before, but I'm, I'll, I'll repeat it. It includes things like apprenticeship program, mentoring, on-the-job training, you know, fostering a strong and talented workforce in Tampa, defining, defining pathways through higher. education, technical certification programs, career readiness, you know, workforce incentives, champion local businesses, removing barriers to access, and then really a focus on subcontracting trades in engineering, architectural, geotechnical, and public engagement opportunities as well. So we're seeing, in the presentations these, the teams give the committee, they are really laser-focused on making this workforce development, you know, part of their overall programs. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
And then Councilmember Dingfelder.
Well, you know, you have to give props when people are working, when people are listening to what this council is saying, what the community is saying, also the business community is saying. But I still contend, when we talked this week.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Fearman concurred, I always look at protecting the house and compliance. I tell Mr. Hart, "He's here," and I still continue, you have to have a compliance officer to make sure that what people say they're doing, they're doing. You know, we can, we can talk about, "It's here," but if we have nobody making sure the house is being protected, we've got no, no, no control. So I'm looking to make sure we can get a little control and make sure that when people are signing contracts and getting our dollars, that we have something in compliance to where we can see that they've got this twenty percent, they've got this and that on this work site, they've got a difference that we're asking them to have. And I don't think that's been occurring, maybe because we didn't have the staff to do it or whatever, but now with the kind of money that we're putting behind these efforts, we've got to have somebody that is in charge of that to make sure independently that it is being done, and we're getting the best bang for our buck. So I think we talked about that earlier, so hopefully we can get that done. Thank you.
Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you, Mr. Bear. Just a couple of things. I'll start with the easier one. Ultimately, you'll be bringing those guaranteed GMPs contracts to council for approval. And I'm going to suggest, only as only one of four, but when the time comes, I'm going to suggest it anyway, so you might as well be, tell them to be prepared for, that, you know, if we're about to award them some piece of $200 million, $300 million contract, I imagine we'll do it incrementally over the years, but let's say it's even ten or fifty million dollars, or whatever it is, that they come to council with their presentation, each one of them with their WMBE presentation. So I'm not going to do it by motion, but I'm sure that you and the vendors will be fine with that. My second one's a little, a little more tricky, a little trickier, because, but we spoke about it during the pipes discussion. I know, is Mr. Hart back there? Yeah, there he is. I can't see him. But I know that his group lost, just like, you know, so many other departments, general fund departments, lost people during the recession. I don't know that they've regained those folks. I get the sense that they're having to do more with less, and that's just under a day-to-day circumstance. And now we've got pipes, and then there was another one, what was the other one, pipes? Well, anyway, pipe, we'll leave it at pipes for now.
The two treatment plants.
Right. So we've got three major projects that all include Mr. Hart's group and additional work from them. But one of the things I think we talked about briefly during pipes is can't pipes, even since it's such a long-term project, ten or twenty years, can't pipes hire additional WNBE folks to help out the implementation of the WMBE program. Well, I should have put it this way. Have you hired additional folks using the pipes money? And if not, do you see any reason why we couldn't or shouldn't?
I don't know whether we have out of pipes. I don't know whether, you know, pipes is for capital improvement, if this could be an ancillary part of that.
But you're hiring engineers in-house.
Because we're hiring PR people, but this would be hiring city employees using capital money. I don't know if that can be done, but I can certainly look into it.
Well, even if it's not hiring, then maybe it's contracting, you know, with some WMBE contractors. And I'm sure Greg probably knows, you know, knows, Mr. Hart probably knows folks out there.
Okay, we can look into that.
Yeah, I mean, we can only ask so much of that group before they, something starts giving, and, you know, and we don't want that. We want it all to improve. And like I said all along, now we have a couple of billion dollars to work with, and I'm not trying to spend it willy-nilly, but I think this is a very worthwhile opportunity to do so.
We'll look into that.
Thank you, Brad.
Anybody else? Councilmember Carlson.
Yeah, just, this mixes kind of the last two topics, but you talked a lot about public engagement, and you referred to hiring PR people, so I should just mention, the motion I made last week that my colleagues approved was suggesting that the administration consider hiring a communications staff, not one person, but a department or staff. And when you talk about four billion dollars in projects, there potentially could be hundreds of thousands or more than a million dollars in, you're in, in public engagement. And some of the things you talked about knocking on doors and handing out flyers, that could be done by, by staff. There's so much going on around the city, and it would make sense to have more consistency. It doesn't mean that you still can't outsource some of it, but at least in the next ten years, it seems like we're going to need, we're going to need more people, and we're going to need some institutional memory to be able to address these issues. And the public wants to hear from people that have a depth of information, not just somebody who's given a script. So anyway, that'll come up another time, but just to make clear, the intent is that I think we could save money, and we could have more authenticity with the public and be more effective with the public if we had a mixture of in-house people and outsourced.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? No? Saying none? All right, item number seventy-two. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, city council members. Jean McLean, Office City Attorney. I'm here on item number seventy-two today, and in preface to my report, I would like to give you an update on some of the actions or nonactions that have been occurring since my last presentation to you on this subject. One of the things that we talked about was that there are two bills within the legislature that were being considered that would repeal the preemption for local governments to regulate single-source plastics and polystyrene. Both of those bills, House Bill sixty forty-three and Senate Bill zero one eight-two, were filed, referred to three committees, and never heard. So they are still sitting up in the legislature, and given that it ends next week, I would venture to report that they will not be passed. There's the court case with regard to the city of Coral Gables on a writ of cert to the Supreme Court. That's still pending, and we don't have an opinion on that at this point in time. The direction from the motion that council made was to appear and present a draft ordinance that is modeled after the city of Orlando policy, and further that said ordinance stays within the constraints of state statute as related to the use of single-use plastics. So what I did in preparation and in response to city council's motion was to go back and look at both the legislative and administrative portions of how we could implement what the city of Orlando had done. Because as you recall, when I was in front of you previously, I'd explained what the city of Orlando did was, they constrain their single-use plastics restrictions to city property, and they adopted it by policy, not by ordinance, so it's implemented administratively. And I also, with Ms. Wynn, have met with a representative, Mr. Christian Leon, who was here at your last presentation, who represents, and I want to get this accurate, the Suncoast Rise Above Plastics Coalition. He was very informative and helpful. He's actually done a lot of groundwork and outreach to businesses, restaurants, and he sent me an email today that said he's meeting with the organizers of the Gasparilla Music Festival and the Florida Blue this weekend. To, what he's doing is, like what you were just talking about, it's an outreach and looking for voluntary participation for regulation of these single-use plastics that we are preempted from regulating. So in response, the, as you also well know, one of the mayor's initiatives is the Sustainability and Resiliency Officer. My understanding is that we are still in the process of bringing somebody on board to do that. I'm not privy to what that timeline is, but I know that it's near. And as part of that, we were looking at education, outreach, community involvement with regard to the businesses, and especially the disabled community. This is one of the things that Mr. Leon had brought up, that the disabled community representatives had indicated in some of the other jurisdictions. They felt they had been left out of the conversation. And also, what the economic impact might be on regulation, regulating these types of products, as far as even on our own property, on food trucks, small businesses, and the economic impact of what it would be with regard to contracts that we had already entered into. And finally, but not, not so minor, especially if you're very interested in football with the Super Bowl upcoming, there'll be major events that'll be going on, and my understanding is that the NFL has a green initiative. So to tell you the truth, I haven't had the opportunity to look at what their, what their program is, and how that may or may not relate to what we would be bringing back to council as far as how we would be implementing our single-use plastics. And so what we are looking at is this issue in a holistic manner, and to ask council to wait for the Sustainability and Resiliency Officer to be brought on board, and to have that established with the committee to bring back recommendations for council as far as implementation. I did look and did prepare, but not for consideration or moving forward, because it's simply a placeholder, is with regard to what could be adopted legislatively as opposed to administratively. And, but we're not really at that point right now because of the, what the initiative would be going forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Citro.
Mr. Chair, I'm agreeing with this report that was giving us, given to us today. Tallahassee has preempted us in so many things, and if we move forward on, on some sort of ordinance today, I fear that without hearing from the legislation, we might be preempted again. So unless council has anything else that they want to bring forward, I'd like to make a motion.
Wait. Did you not say that the issues are essentially dead because session ends next week, so there's nothing really going on this session, right?
Well, my, my motion will be to table this discussion or revisit this discussion at a future date.
All right.
But I'm, but I'm hearing.
When?
Well, okay, I move to staff return to present on June fourth, a report on proposed implementation plan to restrict the single-use plastics on city property that includes community involvement, education, economic impact review, and such other restrictions are reported by any legislative or legal action that have occurred, and such other relevant information is necessary. So I'm asking for staff to come back on July, excuse me, June fourth.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Moving on to item number seventy-three.
I'm just teasing.
Well, John, you said there's only four of us here.
I'm just teasing you, Mr. Care. Giving you a hard time.
Ms. Duncan.
Good afternoon, city council members. Jean Duncan, Infrastructure and Mobility. Here to share with you a report that we submitted, basically just a memo, but wanted to give a little more granular information regarding that memo. There was a request to look at creating a parking enforcement division, which we would absolutely love to do that if we had all kinds of money and opportunities. But what we thought we'd do is take an incremental step towards that desire and see how we could maximize existing resources first to solve the issue of concern, which is some egregious parking situations in probably some particular areas around the city. So our proposal is to first take a no-cost approach at this. We've got forty-three code enforcement officers that we are going to start training and certifying to be capable and properly informed and trained to do parking enforcement throughout the city. We're going to want to focus on particular areas starting out that we know are problematic. And in some of those areas, because we already have non-code situations with buildings and parking lots and so forth, we want to give a real accurate template to our code officers of what would be considered, you know, appropriate citation situation, and not go overboard with the enforcement. And so, as part of that training, in parallel to that, we have our legal department already working on modifying Chapter nineteen of our code to allow this change to occur, which we'll bring back to you very soon. And we also had, just somewhat coincidentally, I believe, the opportunity for Vic B. Day, he's our new transportation and stormwater services, now what we're calling our mobility department. Our director, he had a chance to meet with some residents last night, hip no residents. Councilmember Carlson, I'm not sure if you were there. I think you were there, yes, to hear firsthand from that particular group of their concerns. I've spoken to Steve Michelini about getting some input from his clients, businesses along the Howard corridor to see what issues they're having. So we'd like to start out first with the more problematic areas as a priority, because I think that's really what, you know, prompted this, this interest in the parking enforcement. And so, again, in parallel with all that, we're working on having a webpage for citizens to share their parking issues that they have, or to ask for a forum. It could be small, it could be a little larger scale, where staff, likely Vic B. Day or myself, would go out and hear from people directly about what their, what their issues are, so we can be specifically targeting those code enforcement resources to the problems we're having. So that's the quick reader's digest of our plan of action. In the meantime of this, there's two other quick things. One is TPD has offered to go out to some areas that we're aware of that are, that are of an issue, some in the Hyde Park area, the Howard corridor, to do enforcement. When this code enforcement layer comes along, we're going to want to do some public outreach and some social media outreach to let people know enforcement is going to be more enhanced than what it has been, so maybe people start to voluntarily do the right thing. And then on that webpage, like I said, if people want us to come and chat with them, so we can hear firsthand what their issues are, then we can be better reactive to address those issues. So with that, I'll take any questions that you have.
Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, thank you to you and Vic and Chief of Staff and Legal, everyone who was involved in this. This is something that I've been hearing drumbeat on for a long time, and it's, and it's citywide, and really, I think it probably should be under the heading of enforcing parking in neighborhoods, because I think there's, you know, other than the police, there's enforcement in downtown and Ebor. But, you know, I was at Gasparilla Music Festival on, I mean, Art Festival on Saturday, Sunday, and for like ten blocks, because there's no parking, very little parking there, for like ten blocks, people are parking in those neighborhoods to the west. I don't know if you've got a lot of complaints from that, but you just, the point is, you see it happening, that's West Tampa, you see it happening all over the place. And a couple of questions. One is, if this is an interim step toward maybe creating a parking, a larger parking division, is it possible, have you looked at other parking divisions? Are they typically self-sustaining? Are they self-funding because they're writing tickets? And I know you have to defend them sometimes, but do they usually pay for the staff?
I actually haven't had a chance personally to research that, but we're certainly interested in to see how could there be a more sustainable situation where the citations are supporting the administrative cost of the program? are supporting the administrative cost of the program? So happy to look into more.
And just for anybody, just for anybody watching, it's, people are concerned because they can't get in their driveways because folks will park in front of the driveways, they'll park in front of fire hydrants. Someone last night said they had to bring an ambulance in for their partner and, you know, it will, will ambulances not be able to get in next time. Someone this morning mentioned not being able to turn right or left because people are parked too close to stop signs. And so it's very obvious things, not, not just kind of minor complaints. The, the other question related to that and last night in particular, without mentioning names, there's one area where there's a restaurant, that's been a restaurant for a long time, but in the old days, they didn't need much parking because, because people would just go to the restaurant. Nowadays, a lot of restaurants have takeout, and this one in particular has takeout. And then there's a new, kind of newer phenomenon the last couple of years, which is Uber Eats and all their competitors. That's creating several hundred cars that park for five or 10 minutes illegally, allegedly, and then get out. Is there anything that we should change about enforcement or parking rules or guidelines related to restaurants because of these new phenomena?
Yes, I'm, I'm familiar with the location you're referring to. We do have a project under construction that will give a little bit of relief to that situation. It'll also better mark the, the roadways around that particular location where right now, when you just, when cars see a sea of asphalt, they just feel like it's a free-for-all. And that's how the behavior is out there. People are not following usual protocols because the striping is not there to, to remind them of where they should be parking. So we think that'll give some relief. We want to couple that with, again, targeted enforcement of these particular areas. Once the enforcement message gets out there, we feel like there'd be more availability for parking as people make better choices of how they're going to get and park at the restaurant. I think because of the fact that people run in and run out, they figure my chances of getting a ticket are small because I'll be out of here soon. And so they do, they come in and go, the next person comes in and goes. And for those that live there, they just see a constant set of cars that are, that are a problem, so.
I, I won't ask for a motion on this, but maybe you, we could talk offline later. I know certain districts like South Howard, Ebor, the, the businesses have come together and looked at where there would be Uber stops or, or competitors to Uber. But this, this deliver, food delivery issue seems to be creating lots of issues that are different than ever existed before. And I wonder if there's anything the other cities have done to address that.
Just very quickly, it is also in, in the memo that we have what we're calling a micro-mobility master plan. So we're looking at a large zone around the downtown core with this, with this study, which is basically a plan to identify optimal locations for scooter corrals, Uber and Lyft drop-off, freight drop-offs, or we could try to better manage the right-of-way that we own out there for these type of purposes so that we have, you know, a better utilization of that and less complaints. So we think that's going to also be helpful. So trying to strike it from different angles here to address the problem.
Councilwoman Citra.
Thank you. Hopefully also Ebor has, Ebor proper also has a big problem with parking of, of delivery trucks, food, beverage, those type of things. You can include those. Are, are you leaving after this agenda item?
I was going to, but I can say if you'd like me to.
Well, I, I just want to, again, congratulate you on the award you received the other day.
Oh, thank you very much.
Would you like to explain that for some council members or some people that did not know about that?
Yes, I was so honored to receive the Josie and Stafford Award yesterday at the Women's History Event. And I thank all of those of you that were there. I know, Mr. Carlson, you had to stand up from the back, so that really meant a lot to me.
It's a good problem that so many people showed up to see you get the award.
Right. But I was very honored that, that, of those that were able to come and particularly that you would even just stand up during the whole thing. It was a wonderful event because not only did we get to hear our mayor have all the, our dignitaries such as yourselves there, but to hear Pat Frank speak for me was a particular wonderful moment because I just don't know how many more times I'll get to be in her presence and hear her, you know, in such a short distance from me to speak. She's fascinating. So the Women's History Committee does an awesome job and I commend them for all their hard work and I appreciate the recognition. And I try to live up to all the great values that Josie and Stafford certainly made herself all about when she was working here.
Well, you deserve this award, it was well deserved.
Thank you.
And thank you for everything you've done for the city.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Goodez and Councilwoman Dinkfeld.
You know, sometimes when we try to fix a problem, we don't fix all of the problem. And I'm going to be candid that the parking division, I've gotten so many calls and complaints about the parking division. I've submitted some stuff to the Chief of Staff. I've also, I've met Mrs. Grimes. I know they're, they're looking at some issues with, some ordinance that might be coming forth soon, relative to driver's license situations. But when I see more enforcement, that means that we have to make sure we have a good system in place when people want to dispute the enforcement. And I get hearing all the time that when they go to these hearings, they can't set court dates, they have all these kind of issues. So I want to make sure if we're going to increase the enforcement, that we also have a mechanism in place that people can go there, sign up to get whatever fines they gotta get or pay whatever, a system that they don't, they're not getting frustrated with because you get a ticket, you can go right up to the courthouse, you go to a window, tell them your name. But they tell me the process over here is very, very difficult. So I want to make sure if we're gonna increase the enforcement, that we got our mechanisms in place to make sure that we get good customer service and people can get in and out, pay their fines or dispute their fines, whatever.
Appreciate that feedback. The parking division is now part of the mobility department, so we've had that responsibility for about two weeks now. So we're happy to hear about some of the concerns that we may not be aware of and happy to see how we can make some adjustments to do things better and more comprehensively, you know, baking in the transportation part of things as well. Because parking and transportation is obviously closely aligned. So thank you so much for, for letting me be aware of that.
Councilwoman Dinkfeld.
Thanks. Yeah, on a lighter note, Jean, I, I want to echo Joe's comments and congratulations to you on Stafford Award. The Stafford was amazing lady and, and those of you following in her footsteps are equally fantastic. In, in regard, in regard to that, I was just thinking to myself, over the thirty-something years that I've been either involved or watching city government, I think you're the highest female staff person that I can recall in your recent promotion. You're well, well deserved.
I know the city attorney's pretty high.
Yes, yes. With all, with all due, no, but I'm talking about over there.
Yeah.
With all due respect to Gina and Julia, who, who, you know, we're, we're glad to have had them as city attorneys. But in terms of the actual administration, I think you are the highest, we've had two, couple of women mayors, Sandy, Pam, and now the third, third woman mayor. But in terms of the staff, you've now, you've now risen.
Oh, she and I too.
Yes, we have.
This is true.
But, but Jean.
You're probably thinking public works.
But Jean is the, is a, somehow or another, a top, top dog. And I see, I congratulate you too.
She's a top, top dog too.
Is she? I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
All right, all right, I'm sorry, I apologize. I missed that.
Well, you know what? Your, your reason you probably don't know is the orb chart hasn't come out yet.
Oh, okay.
You should be getting that today.
That's my excuse.
If you had that, you could have better information, so.
I see, you had my apology.
Yes.
Two days in a row. But anyway, so we had, last week, we had karmageddon, as somebody termed it, in regard to that CSX mess. Thank goodness we got through it without any horrific, life-threatening injuries that I was ever made aware of. And, and, and we don't need to get into, into all that. We got through it and I know it will never happen again.
Well, they're coming back, but we want to, we will be better prepared when they come back.
Well, let's hope they don't, let's, let's hope when they come back, they don't do it all at once.
Yes, because their next list has Howard Avenue, Dale Mabry, Kennedy Boulevard. It's a little, yeah, so we are meeting and reading to be as prepared as we can and trying to get those at the top of the organization at CSX to, to be a little more responsible, reasonable and considerate of the situation.
If they can stagger them and do one or two at a time, yeah, that would make more sense. When they do Kennedy, that's going to be a mess in itself. I, I assume they haven't done Kennedy yet. But anyway, but hand in hand with that, were you here a minute ago when Brad was talking about that Howard Armenia?
Yes.
Thing and him closing that off? And we always talk about how departments need to work closer together.
Yes.
So I, you know, you and Vic really need to work closely with them, not just in terms of rerouting traffic, but really to see if there's a feasible alternative to leave, to leave a lane open on Howard or Armenia when they're, when they're doing that dig.
Yes.
So.
And the timing of when that happens too.
Well, that's the other thing, yeah, that's the other thing. I just sent Mr. Bennett a note about that. And also Brad, to make sure that they're working 24/7 through the weekend, you know, during that dig. So maybe it doesn't have the, you know, the, the horrific impact that it otherwise would. How many, how many trips a day on the Howard Armenia Corps? It must be in the, easily in the tens of thousands.
Yeah, probably, I'm guessing maybe thirty thousand.
Yeah.
Somewhere in that realm.
Yeah, pretty big.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Citra.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Going back to Councilwoman Goodez's point, is there any thought to having in-house magistrates for parking citations?
That's something I'm, I'm not familiar with. I'm certainly glad to look into that. Maybe Legal might help us out with that suggestion.
Thank you.
But, yeah, we'll, we'll look into it and get back to you.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Anybody else?
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Item number seventy-four.
Good afternoon. OCAW, Neighborhood and Community Affairs. So you asked staff to appear before you to report on FAN, the Tampa Homeowners Association of Neighborhoods, and the decline in their membership. What we've decided to do is to hold a social or a gathering for, for FAN where we will invite all of the neighborhood presidents to get their perspective and their input on their involvement or the lack thereof of FAN. We are in the, are in the planning process of this and are anticipating the social to occur somewhere between April and May. We did not rush with doing that because we wanted to get as many of the presidents participating as possible. So we wanted to notice, give them enough communication in terms of a meeting, what to expect and what we're looking for in terms of their input to us, and so we'll know what direction to take. So I don't, I'm here to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from council members? Councilmember Goodez?
I want to thank Marie for coming to that last FAN meeting. I went, Mr. Shelby, Mr. Citra was there, but we stayed in compliance with the sunshine law, so, so you can know that, sir. My representative Citra?
Yeah, that's correct.
We're compliant. A couple, two, three weeks ago, maybe?
Something like that, two weeks ago.
We went, we observed, and it's just like I thought. You know, I was talking about our seniors and they're, they're going on and we gotta have new blood pumping a little bit. And we saw that the other night when we went. And I just think that's the, I kind of mentioned that, so I'm glad that staff picked up on that, Marie picked up on that. And I think that's going to be a great idea moving forward, getting everyone who's new because these neighborhood presidents do change year to year. So I think it's a good thing to go the route we're going to get everybody together and maybe get that, those new ideas pumping. And I think it, it'll probably work out, work at all. The whole king's will be worked out if you do that and you'll get some younger people on the board to move forward.
Thank you, Councilman Dinkfeld.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, and I, I agree. I think it's a great idea to have, have a social. I'm sure there's, there's probably a lot of neighborhood presidents who aren't even aware of FAN and its great history. Margaret Vizi and Jerry, rest in peace, and, you know, people like that who, who put in so many years dedicated to our community and to our neighborhoods. But it, it definitely needs reinvigoration. I think we saw that last spring when we were, many of us were campaigning and, and went and visited with them. Please make sure that you let council know as far in advance as possible. So if it's a social, that we have an opportunity to, to participate and maybe you can even let them know that, you know, it's not, you know, some of their council members will be there. I don't know if that will be discouraging or encouraging in terms of participation. Also, I know we can't provide any booze or anything, but maybe food. Food's always a good thing to get people, get people there. So anyway, my two cents, thanks.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Councilman Carlson?
I think a couple of things. One is because the, the mayor administration and city council are pro neighborhoods, we're seeing a lot more activism. And because it wasn't that way before to, to, the way it is now, you all know I have this program Cafe Con Tampa, and it grew because the neighborhood leaders felt frustrated and they were looking for a place to go. The reason why we changed the name from historic Hyde Park, whatever it was, to Cafe Con Tampa is because we had so many other neighborhood groups coming. And so I think there's a great demand. Every Friday, we have a big crowd, it's a lot of neighborhood leaders. They're interested, they're, they're, they want to get involved, they're looking to do capacity building. We just need the, the right programming to help them. And I, and I think to continue the message that we, that we want to help them and, and work with them on, on the issues that are important to them.
Thank you very much. I've, I've been attending FAN meetings for about ten years, and in that, many people have passed away, great leaders. Steve LeBour, Jerry Frankhauser, the gentleman that was South of Gandy, if you, if you remember him, he passed away, but.
Al Stevenson.
Vicky Palier.
Vicky, yeah, exactly. I mean, it's, wow, you know, the more I think about it, how many, how much has changed in the last ten years? And I served as neighborhood president for my neighborhood association, so I was there, you know, every month for their meetings. But when I was last in attendance, I believe it was last year at Union Station, you know, we, we sat, it was just a very candid conversation, how is this group going to continue forward? And it was, well, you're young and why don't you do, and why don't you this? You know, I'm in the, I'm in the capacity of, of a council member, but I was happy to help. And I go, what about your social media? What about, oh, you're young, you know, and you know how to do these things. But Councilmember Carlson has Cafe Con Tampa. And though it's not like FAN where it's neighborhood association presidents, there are, there is a general, huge turnout of people. I mean, sometimes it's standing room, many times it's standing room only. They bring great speakers, they bring people from all different walks of life, but the point is people are interested and they make it down to the Oxford Exchange, which is not the easiest place to park. They charge a, a reasonable amount, but you get a breakfast buffet and coffee. Everything is done right. The point is it's successful and it's successful week after week. And I've been going there or hanging outside there, as, as they know, for several years. And even in their old location, when it was at Hugo's, it was always full of people. And I had the opportunity to be the guest speaker several times, but, you know, Councilmember Carlson, he, he understands marketing. His Cafe Con Tampa proves that he knows what he's doing. And perhaps looking at that business model and applying it to FANs, whether we do a social, whatever it is, you know, he's doing something right because people every week are attending and the crowds are good. So my two cents, anybody else have any comments? No, seeing none? Thank you very much. We appreciate all that you do. And on another note, because Jean Duncan was here and because you're here, yesterday I had lunch with a city council member from St. Petersburg. And she says, you know, we have a majority woman council and here we have all men. But I told her, in positions of power and authority higher up, we have yourself, we have Jean Duncan, we have our city attorney Gina Grimes, we have our mayor. And she asked, what is it like working with so many women in power? And I said, it's wonderful. If you look at it, things flow well, you work hard, we trust you and we appreciate that, everything that you do from, from the mayor's office down, everybody that's here. You know, the world is different from fifty years ago, from twenty years ago to now, but we see how successful the city is. And it's because thanks to people like you and everyone in this audience and, and Ms. Duncan and the mayor and whatnot, so. Just want to let you know, it's a conversation I had yesterday, but I said, actually, things are great. So we appreciate you, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for that.
All right. Item number seventy-five, Mr. Shelby.
Mr. Chairman, I've distributed to you a, four options. Now, what we're talking about specifically is on February 6th, in response to a memo from Chief of Staff John Bennett dated January 28th. He gave council four options. What he's asked for at the time was eight hours of council's time, and he provided four ways of accomplishing that. And on February 6th, city council made a motion to accept his option two, which are four two-hour sessions in the months of March, April, May, and June to coincide with the current workshop. which are four two-hour sessions in the months of March, April, May, and June to coincide with the current workshops, and that the sessions be set at a time certain of ten AM beginning on March twenty-sixth, which is the March workshop. And I ask that you have your calendars in front of you, and I mentioned this when we made this motion, um, I believe last week. Um, because if you look at March twenty-sixth, you have, uh, including the commendations, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven items, including the two-hour workshop. Now, city council has made a commitment to the administration that at ten o'clock on a workshop day, they would give the administration two hours. The administration has given the commitment that they will take those two hours, and, uh, council will be done with the workshop by noon. Um, and of course, uh, what we have before us are previously made motions of city council setting workshops for that morning. Now, I'll go through those very quickly for you. You have commendation for police officer of the month, and then a commendation for Marlon Anderson, there's, those are both set for nine o'clock.
This is the twenty-sixth.
Those are the twenty-sixth of March. Then you have a, a nine o'clock report for, um, Real Estate Division and Legal Department for a detailed report on land banking for the city of Tampa and the possibility of creating an ordinance for adoption. Now, the two, March is the most number of workshops. April, we still have to work with, but when we get to May and June, I think we're in pretty good shape. So, looking at this, the first thing to do is to look at your commendations. How much time will your commendations take? And then subtract that time up until ten o'clock, because I believe council's commitment is to be ready to hear the administration at ten o'clock. Because if you go into ten fifteen, ten thirty, ten forty-five, you'll have staff sitting there, and then what you'll end up having is them not being out at noon at the time that they're expected to be out of the, out of these chambers. So that being said, what council can do is keep the commendations and then choose what they're gonna do till a drop-dead time of ten o'clock, stop it, and then take up the administration. And towards that end, I've given council four options to consider. You can accept a written report in lieu of a workshop. You can reschedule the other workshops as a staff report, limited to five minutes, on a later regular meeting agenda with few staff reports. Mind you, you can't just keep adding all the staff reports to, let's say, March or April, because those are already filling up. You have to take a look at the calendar. You can reschedule the workshop, uh, to one-thirty in the afternoon on a workshop day. In other words, create an afternoon session, but I ask that you be advised to clear your conflicts so that you can be in attendance, particularly if you're the maker of the motion. Um, a, a quorum is required. So things, if you choose to set them, please be cognizant of the fact that you're asking staff to appear, and if council is not prepared to be prepared at one-thirty, then, um, my recommendation is don't set it. But if you do, you make a commitment to the administration that you will be there to hear their presentation at one-thirty. Um, the other option, the last option, is to reschedule the item to workshops in July and beyond. And I ask that, for that purpose, you refer to the council's calendar there to manage the number of workshops per meeting for those months. And that, what you have before you now is the task to be able to clear your March and April workshops to allow for the two-hour staff.
Mr. Shelby? I, I was just gonna add, Andrew Zelman, Legal Department, you mentioned one of the topics, um, land banking, and I can tell you that that's a topic that's being studied by the, um, Housing Affordability Team, um, and trying to integrate that into the possibility of creating a community land trust and other affordable housing initiatives. So that might be a topic that could be either removed from the agenda or delayed significantly, because again, it's, it's being studied already by the administration.
What are we talking about delay on that? What, what, what delayed time? What's the timeframe on the issue?
Well, my point is it's, it's already being studied by staff in order to determine how it can become part of the Affordable Housing Initiatives. So it, it may be that we just don't even need a, an agenda item right now, and we can just, when we have some initiatives to report on, we can, we can tell you how that's being incorporated into those initiatives.
So if you'd like, if I may make a suggestion, if that is the case, if you'd like an update, uh, for that, you could just request a, a less than five-minute staff report, or even a written report at some point in time at a later date, and then you could have it brought back to the agenda. Or you can choose a date, uh, under the other options.
Well, she's saying they're, they're gonna, they're reviewing it with the other, other folks that are involved. I don't have an issue with pushing it back, but I want to be, make sure that when it does come back, that we can ask questions, because I want to make sure what policies are they trying to make place versus an ordinance? Now, we're talking about policy, we're talking ordinance, so I want to make sure when that comes back, we have a chance to discuss that, because, you know, you can get another administration company, and say, well, we're not gonna do that anymore.
Well, if I may make a suggestion, then, and again, these are just suggestions, it's certainly, it's council's prerogative, whatever it wants to do. You can request, uh, you could ask Ms. Zelman how long the administration needs to come back with a written report, a brief one, and then council can choose when to put it onto the agenda for a workshop or, or a meeting or a staff report.
That's fine.
Yeah, and I mean, without, without giving an off-the-cuff report now, I mean, the concept of land banking is, is simply the, um, city using the tools it has to acquire property, whether it's property we already have, a surplus property, whether it's property we acquire through foreclosure, and holding that for then some later-to-be-identified purpose. So as I mentioned, we're looking now at using some of the city's currently-banked and possible-future-banked property for how, affordable housing purposes. So I'm not sure.
How much time before you think you could give council an update?
I think we can give you an update on, on some of those initiatives, you know, this summer, I think you were talking about pushing it off till.
Well, if you want it, do you want, council?
I've got a mo- a motion, I think they could deal with a lot of these all at once.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, Councilmember Dinkfelder.
Okay. So in regard to March twenty-sixth, um, and I don't know if there's anything pressing in regard to Marlon Anderson, uh.
Well, that, that can only take, that can take just five minutes, frankly, wouldn't you think so?
You want to leave Marlon alone?
I think you could, I, I think, I think your commendations for that month can stay.
All right, we'll leave police month and Marlon alone.
Right.
Um, in regard to the following items, uh, the land banking workshop, the, uh, the workshop that starts with Carol Post and speaks to affordable housing.
That's a substantial, substantive subject.
Uh, those two, the, the, uh, urban villages, which I think was my motion, and, and also the, um, the next one, which is, uh, flooding and evacuation South of Gandy, which we probably shouldn't be dealing with, with the litigation anyway.
Do you want, well, how do you want to deal with that?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna lump them all together in one second. And then finally, um, the, uh, the ten-thirty one that's code enforcement, and I would propose moving all those to the July workshop.
Can't be done, sir.
What?
You can't be done. Because that's, are you gonna go into, are you gonna go into the afternoon that day? Because the first three that you've already previously said, I believe it was last week, to the thirtieth of July, are very substantive, uh, in-depth matters regarding, uh, planning and zoning. So the question that you have, I could see you adding one or two, perhaps, uh, to, to, um, to July, maybe one. Um, but, but all of them, no, sir, it's not realistic.
I mean, so i- is everybody, I mean, I, 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 I guess, uh, I, I look at number three. We talk about these items, I look at number three. I don't know if everyone, you know, Thursday's our day, so I don't know if everybody's amenable to doing, doing one of those.
Just take my tentative motion and move them all into August, which right now is virtually empty.
Um. And that's one, two, three, four.
I agree with Councilman Goode's, but.
What, which is what?
I mean.
Uh, I, on my calendar, I block out all day on Thursday, and, uh, because I fix.
Here's the issue with workshops, and this is a distinction we began to explain. You know, somewhere down the line, but when you have a day like today, we're now at, let's say, three-thirty, and we started this morning, that's well and good, because we're at the end of the day. When you are in a workshop day or a CRA day, just remember that at five oh-one PM, you have, you have a whole night of comprehensive plan amendments, let's say on March twenty-sixth. You have, uh, seven plan amendments and, uh, three SU, um, twos. Um, so it's, it's, and that may change over time, I don't think, I think that's pretty full. But just, just a reminder, what, and, and, and there had been a time previous to the, you know, Great Recession in two thousand and eight, that city council would start at nine o'clock in the morning, and would, maybe if they were lucky, take a break from five to six, and then work until eleven o'clock at night, and so.
Those are the days.
Mr. Chair, can I?
All right, so my motion is to, to move those that I just identified, uh.
To August?
To, to the August date, um, I don't, they're all important, but none of them are pressing that I can see. And, um, and leave, uh, you know, leave them at the time that, that they're spoken to already.
We have a motion from Councilman Dinkfelder, do we have a second?
Certainly.
We have a second from Councilman Citro, is there any discussion? Councilman Carlson?
Can I just say, um, from a communication point of view, um, I don't think peop- anyone should ever give a two-hour presentation on anything. Um, maybe an attorney presenting in court, but it's not, it's not effective communication to present for two hours.
But it's, but it's give and take, though, it's not this straight presentation.
So what I would, what I would suggest is, I, I mean, we have to hear from staff, but I would suggest that these only be an hour, and that, that the presentation not be more than fifteen minutes, and then the rest of it be Q and A.
And there's one thing, and there's one other variable.
Because otherwise, the presentation fills the time, and sure, there's lots of detail, but, um, but, but we need everybody to be concise, because, uh, otherwise we'll just have PowerPoint after PowerPoint after PowerPoint, and it won't, it, it, it won't be as impactful.
There was a time when city council set these with time certens and set it as an hour. Um, what complicated that? Council, uh, started allowing public comment at workshops, and there was a time that public comment was not taken on workshop dates. And neighborhoods came in and asked that, we would like to comment, but we want to be able to hear what staff has to say before we comment, and before you make any motion, so you can hear what we have to say about it. That's the big variable with workshops now. You don't know how full this room is going to be on any particular issue. For instance, there has been discussion, just as you say, there's one, if you look at the April date, on the same day you have a discussion of the issues of Sul- Sulfur Springs and the issues on Bay Shore Boulevard, all in one day. How many, how many people, just for public comment alone, will be here on each of those issues? And those are, those are things that council needs to contemplate when they set these workshops, because, um, time management, it's very hard for staff or the public to know, when you set something for nine o'clock or ten-thirty, when ultimately what's going to happen. And if, at some point in time, council chooses to reorder them, then all concept of knowing wherever they are on the agenda is out the window, and you end up having staff and public here for the whole day.
Mr. Shelby, how many of these workshops is the administration?
Councilman Goode's?
The admin- the administration? How many, yeah, how many of these workshops?
The administration is requesting, the administration is requesting two hour, the administration is requesting eight-hour workshop, eight hours of presentation and questions and answers and interaction with the city council, is my understanding, but eight hours. Council was prevent, presented with four options, and I was out of the, I was out sick on February sixth, and council decided to add four two-hour sessions, to, rather than do four hours, and here's what his options were, four two-hour, uh, special call sessions on separate days, or within the current se- option two, within the current schedule of workshops, or two four-hour special call sessions in March or April, or all in one day, four hours before lunch and four hours after lunch, any other option, for a total of eight hours. And council settled on this particular one, which meant we have to clear, or city council has to clear its calendar to be able to accommodate its motion and its commitment it made to the administration.
Councilmember Dinkfelder.
So, Mr. Carlson, I, I hear what you're saying, and I agree with you that, you know, that we, just to hear one department head drone on for two hours straight with PowerPoints, I agree with you, it doesn't accomplish a whole lot. But the way I understood it from Mr. Bennett was, let's say, let, uh, let's say in the entire eight hours, let's say we have sixteen different departments or, or sub-departments or what have you, you know, that's a half hour each. That's not a whole lot. And, and, and part of the reason that John Bennett explained to me was, and maybe he said it to the all of council, was not only did he want to accomplish us now, um, at, at this point, because some of us are, you know, new or, or retreads, but also, um, because it sort of will lead into the budget process. So this will give the departments a good, let's say, a half hour to forty-five minutes each to be able to, you know, really say, this is what we do, and this is why we do it, and that sort of thing, as part of sort of the pre-budget process. So I think it's, it's time well spent, um, and I think we should accommodate it, frankly. Like I said, these other items are important, but they're not as time-sensitive, and I don't know if my motion passed a minute ago on.
You got a second from Councilman Citro on the word of discussion, Councilman Goode's?
All right.
I think we misjudged this. You know, I, I look at, if we're talking about the administration coming to us about the budget in these different departments. To me, these are council days for the people and doing the business of the people on council days on Thursdays. Maybe there should have been, and it's only my opinion, should have been a couple of special meeting days that are, that are not on council days, that we can really sit and dissect what they're saying, what they're talking about. I mean, to just go to a meeting and, and we say a few minutes here and there, I mean, are we really getting the full impact of looking at the items that are needed for the new budget, or the process of the departments? I just think that now looking at all of this, it should have been on a non-council day with a special, uh, special meeting in reference to the administration request to go over all of the city departments and administration reference to the budget.
Councilman Citro?
Thank you very much. Before you speak, Councilman Fimay, uh, we have a new administration, and we're seeing changes done every day, whether it be a new, uh, coded, excuse me, a new, uh, CRA, uh, head, we're, we're seeing a new economic head. We're now talking about a new resiliency officer. We're, we're, we're seeing these changes over and over again. Uh, I think this is necessary, and now you're talking, Mr. Goode's. I personally feel that this should be a totally separate day, so we can take the time and ask the questions and find out the information. However, I believe we, uh, we, uh, agreed to, number two, uh, again, as councils, I, I want to be clear that I want to hear all the information and be able to take the time to ask the questions, and to our council's point, hear from the community.
But let me just say this, council, with regard to the departmental briefings, um, if it ends at noon, if you want to end at noon, there's no obligation to take public comment on that if it's council's decision to not comment on it. So you end at noon, they can always come back at a, another meeting. There will be no official action taken at these briefings unless council wishes to, but I, I don't believe that's the purpose of it. And, and I should also say one more thing, council. You look at item, you look at the items on the workshop for March twenty-sixth, and you tell me how with public input on this, you're gonna get out of here by noon. As it, as it stands now, I, you're, you're, you're looking at, and I don't want to use, I don't want to use an analogy, but you, you're not going to get out of here by noon, is it, as it now stands. So ultimately, I, my recommendation is to, to look at it irrespective of, unless you want to change the dates of, of your previous motion, to reconsider your previous motion. And I'm concerned, just, not, it's not my business, it's your business, but your chair and Councilman Miranda are not present if you make that decision today.
Councilman Carlson?
Uh, with my two colleagues, I would, I would rather just spend one whole day and, and spend the time we need and, and not interrupt everything else. There's too much else that's going on.
You know, in, in my opinion, real quick, I treat this as a full-time job. Uh, I'm grateful that I have the freedom to do whatever. If we have to be here on a Sunday, I, I know, I'll be here on a Sunday. If we have to be here all day, you know, when we campaigned, or when I campaigned, it was, I work for the people, I work for you, whatever it takes, however long it takes, if I'm here till two in the morning for rezonings, night meeting, whatever, it is what it is. We don't get paid more, we don't get paid less. I'm flexible, so I, I'm happy with whatever the, uh, the, the majority of this board goes with. I'm open and dedicated to this. Councilman Goode's?
I know we have a motion on the floor, but I, I, I think after we get to Mr. Dinkfelder's motion, I, I'd like to reopen it for consideration at reference to having a, a special call meeting to where we can meet and really hear what's going on, and, uh, hear the people's business and, and what the departments are saying and doing, so we can have a chance to, uh, look at what they're talking about and have our concerns heard then. Uh, I, I just think we just need to have a separate day versus trying to throw things off the calendar and add months down, months down. I just think that's not productive, and, uh, we'll entertain Mr. Dinkfelder's motion.
I'll withdraw the motion if, if the, the second, uh, Mr. Citro wants.
Then I would love a second, uh, Councilman Goode's, uh.
All right, so we have a motion withdrawn from Councilman Dinkfelder. Mr. Shelby?
And now my question now is, um...
And now my question now is, um, and mind you, what you're doing now is not, the administration is not aware of it unless they're watching it live. So the question is, what is, so the question that I have for you is, and I could print out what these four options are, are you saying you want, uh, you want eight hours in one day or do you want two four-hour days?
I think, yeah, two four-hour days.
I agree.
That's fine, that's reasonable where, you know, when you have too much information coming in at once, you, you, you don't pay attention as much, you're not as focused, you get tired, whatever, you know, the mind needs to take a break, but that works.
And can I ask?
Can I make a suggestion, Mr. Shelby?
Yes.
Between now and next Thursday, why don't you work with the administration, come up with the two four-hour days and then we'll shift everything next week.
Okay, can I ask them this item, can this item then, could we make the motion then for council to, um, make a motion to reconsider its February sixth motion, not do that today, but then to, but to consider option three instead and set that, and council, looking at next week's calendar, that is a CRA day, you have a, uh, six PM meeting, would you like to set this at five thirty PM to be able to handle that before the...
I, I don't prefer doing it on a day of the people's...
No, 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 I'm saying to you, I'm saying just to, just to be able to come back and inform the chief of staff that council now wishes to consider option three, which is the two four-hour special call sessions in the months of March and April, he may have to reconsider depending on the timing now.
I think it's gonna take, I think it's gonna...
You also need to look at what's already set for the changes.
Exactly, what's set for the changes.
I think it's, I think it will take five minutes, just leave it at six o'clock, come back to us at six.
Put it on for six o'clock?
Yeah.
And make that a...
Is that all right, Mr. Chair?
I'm just, I'm just concerned that you may have a room full of people and it may be as long a discussion as we can have tonight.
Cause basically, all right, let me make a motion.
Okay.
Make sure we're all in agreement.
You got one on the floor, not the other.
No, no, he was wrong.
No, we don't, I withdrew that other motion. The, the motion is to direct Mr. Shelby to work with the administration and the clerk's office to, uh, to come back with two four-hour days that are not Thursdays, um, to, to , uh, address Mr. Bennett's request.
We have a motion from Councilman Dinkfelder.
And that, and that is, and that is come back at six PM.
And that will come back at six o'clock to next Thursday night.
Next Thursday night.
With a second from Councilman Carlson, any discussion on the motion?
Monday's work best.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great.
One last item, council.
Oh.
Um, we could ask this question now or we can just let things play out the way they are, but just be cognizant or sensitive to what next, uh, the workshop on March twenty-sixth looks like with all those items that are on there, because, um, you will not get out by noon, and even with, even with public comment, so...
Just bring, bring more focus back there. Thank you very much, Mr. Shelby.
Thank you.
That concludes the agenda, so we'll go to new information reports and, or information reports and new business. Councilmember Carlson?
Yeah, um, I think this is an important one. I, uh, talked to the DOT the last few days, I think, I think they met with all of you, and, um, they're, under instructions from back when Lisa Montioni was on, um, uh, council to come back quarterly to talk to the CRA board about, uh, TBX, and, um, uh, those issues still continue, but, um, I, I said to them, uh, I think we're, we're taking too small of a view of this. Part of it is because I'm in South Tampa, um, a, a couple of you are citywide also, but, um, but talking about TBX doesn't cover transportation issues throughout the city. So what I'd like to do is, um, i- i- and, and this is with DOT's blessing and, and suggestion also, I'd like to, um, in the CRA meeting, uh, cancel that request and then instead make a motion today to set up a quarterly update by DOT where they would talk about all transportation in the city, not just TBX. It could include TBX, but not just that. So...
Go ahead.
So I, I'll just, I'd like to make a motion that FDOT work with the City of Tampa staff to provide quarterly updates to council on current and planned projects that may impact our communities within the City of Tampa. The update should cover i- innovation and transportation alternatives as well, as well as roadway improvements. The updates would be given by FDOT staff or jointly with city staff.
We have a motion from Councilman Carlson.
If I can, is that, come back with a recommendation for when that would be, to, to begin, you want quarterly?
Quarterly, I don't know when we would start, we can't...
Okay, but, and the question then would be, would it be a workshop day or would it be a, that's what, and how long, and how long would, and how long would the presentation?
No, so the idea is that instead of, CRA takes a, a small view, TBX takes a smaller view.
Is this a CRA motion?
No, it's two separate things. So if, if we pass this, then what I do is make a, a motion during the CRA meeting to, to say that, to, to end that one because this one replaces it.
So you might as well speak for us then, council?
Yes.
Then you gotta cancel the CRA first when you send that over to council, you know, right?
No, I think, I think, I think, I think you, I think you can do it this way.
Motion from Councilman Carlson.
I will second, wonderful motion.
Second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Or do you want a recommendation from the administration?
A recommendation from the administration, I would start.
That's great. Anything else, sir?
Because, because you'd also, are you saying you'd also require FDOT or, or, or the, let me...
Let me refer, let me, let me retract that.
Presenting.
You're going to be invited, it's, it's an invitation to FDOT.
Yes. No, but, but they asked, they, I suggested this and they said they thought it was a great idea, they would welcome this, so then it's a scheduling issue with them.
FDOT link's coming. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Yep, anything else, sir?
Nope, thank you.
Councilman Citro?
Nothing.
Councilman Goode?
Yes. We can get out of here, huh? Guess I need, huh? Uh, council, you know, we talked about, uh, protecting the house and I think we've come to a point that we have to make sure we're protecting everyone's house within the city. I, I'd like to make a motion for, for the administration to look into the possibility of an independent compliance officer for the purpose of RFPs, RFQs, and, and WMBEs for all departments to be assigned to the audit department.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Goode, with a second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Anything else, sir?
Is it?
No. Are you, are you gonna, are you going to, uh, follow up and then, and then inform council, I guess?
Yes.
Or just make the recommendation or the, uh, request of the administration and, and you'll follow up?
Correct.
Okay, and it'll come back, you'll bring it back on a future agenda?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Anything else, sir? No? Councilman Dinkfelder?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just two items, one is a follow-up.
Mr. Baird's presentation, um, I'd like, I'd like, uh, what we talked about is the possibility of using some pipes money to fund some additional, uh, WMB officers. And, um, so I would like a, a, uh, a report back, uh, written report is fine, from Mr. Baird, um, or any, or anybody in the administration, uh, at the May, by the May seventh regular meeting.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Dinkfelder, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye, and that would be under staff reports, um, just, just as a written report. And then, and then secondly, um, let me see if I can read my scribble here. Okay, in regard to the DOT, um, I'd like to, to make a motion that this council, I'd like to make a motion that this council adopt a resolution opposing the tolling of any interstate lands within the City of Tampa.
All right, great motion, and do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Goode's, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I have two motions, since he's the CRA chair, does he go to him?
Actually, that's all.
It should go to Councilman Miranda, but he's not here.
But if, no, if, wait a second, then it is member who most recently served as chair, and I don't see anybody who most recently served as chair, but...
Then, then...
Has most recently served as chair for Tampa, who has most recently served as chair for Tampa.
Nope.
Then, then is the finance committee chair, who's the finance committee chair? Chair.
Charlie, that flunked.
Uh, but I am the vice chair, yes.
You're the vice chair of...
I believe I am vice chair.
What else does it say?
Of the finance committee.
Go ahead, keep, keep reading, keep writing, keep writing.
Of the finance committee.
We're down to, we're down to, uh, Al, what was his name? I'm in charge, Al.
Al Hay.
Al Hay, we're down to Al Hay.
Yes, I am, I am vice chair of finance.
He is the vice chair of finance, what do you say about it, Flirt? Neither have I, neither have I.
I'll move for Joe to be temporary chair at this moment.
All right.
Councilman Mascop.
Thank you very much. I have, um, a motion to present a commendation to Tampa Pride to be given at the Tampa Pride Diversity Parade on March twenty-eighth.
Second.
There was a motion made by Councilman Mascop, a second by Councilman Dinkfelder, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Next.
And then this is, uh, it's very special to me because, um, of my very special aide, Lisa. Uh, it's National Colon Cancer Awareness Month, and it's an annual observation in the United States during the month of March to increase awareness of colorectal cancer. It was first established via presidential proclamation signed by President Clinton on February twenty-ninth, two thousand. Colorectal counsel, cancer is responsible for an estimated fifty thousand deaths each year, but thanks to increased colon cancer awareness efforts, the death rate has been dropping steadily since the nineteen eighties. Dress in Blue Day is Friday, March sixth, tomorrow, and let's allies everywhere join our mission to end colorectal cancer. This year, more than one hundred and forty-seven thousand people will be diagnosed with this highly preventable disease. By dressing in blue tomorrow, you will join more than one point four million cancer patients and survivors living today. We go blue for them, their families and their community. Some famous people who've had this, Audrey Hepburn, Vince Lombardi, Charles Schultz, Jackie Gleason, Ronald Reagan, Elizabeth Montgomery, and Robin Gibb of the Bee Gees. So I wanted to, uh, just make folks wear that, I'll be, I'm, I'm always in blue usually, and I'll be wearing blue tomorrow and encourage everyone watching and everyone here to do so. That's it. Uh, can I get a motion to receive and file?
Motion filed, second?
All right, motion from Councilman Citro, second from Councilman Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.